Okay, we're ready to start. So, welcome to the regular board meeting for the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors for April 11, 2017. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Supervisor Pine?
Here.
Supervisor Groom?
Present.
Supervisor Slocum?
Here.
Supervisor Canepa?
Here.
President Horsley?
Here. Now time for public comment.
Public comment is reserved for persons wishing to address the board on any county-related matters that are not otherwise on this meeting agenda or listed on consent agenda. Speakers are customary limited to two minutes, but an extension can be provided to you at the discretion of the board president. Mr. President, we have three speakers. First is Martin Fox, followed by Brent Turner.
Veterans Supervisor Slocum and Mr. Malpe and County Council Mr. Byers. Thank you for your service to the county. Please approve the civil detention of persons who are sick in county residential treatment facilities by approving Consent Agenda Items #34 and 35. Please also direct County Council to work with the Health Systems, Behavior, Health, and Recovery Services to recommend legislation to give the county authority to provide humane treatment to persons living with mental illness who are not able to understand their need for treatment, after reviewing how existing state laws, including Laura's Law, are applied in coordination with Los Angeles County Council and the newly-appointed Director of its Department of Mental Health. The Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors found that, quote, "There needs to be a higher standard of mental health care," when they unanimously passed a resolution calling for County Council to revisit the application of the Lanterman-Petras Short Act last Tuesday. They also found it was necessary because the 72-hour civil detention that is authorized under Lanterman-Petras Short makes it, quote, "impossible to provide meaningful treatment." The fact of the matter is, the eight separate grants of civil and criminal immunity founded in the Lanterman-Petras Short Act means there is no standard of mental health care in California at all. When you vote to set the agenda and approve the consent agenda, you will approve the civil detention of persons who are sick in our own county's residential treatment facilities. Please take the opportunity to coordinate with Los Angeles County's investigation of state mental health laws, including Laura's Law, to recommend legislation to give the county the authority needed to provide humane treatment to persons living with mental illness who do not understand their need for treatment. Thank you.
Next speaker is Brent Turner, followed by Colette Azzapardi.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Brent Turner. I come before you today as, in hope of giving a bit of an update regarding the election system security issue that I think everybody's now heightenly aware of because of the news of the day and seeing the headlines about the hacker that was just arrested in Spain. Again, we continue to have conversation with the Department of Homeland Security on this issue in hopes that we can all, as counties, get together with San Francisco County and move forward toward open-source, general-public license voting systems. As I've mentioned to you before, these particular systems, we've been advocating for 15 years, will provide a higher degree of security to defend against interference from outside as well as inside threats. The systems we have developed and advocated by way of the California Association of Voting Officials are simple paper ballot printing systems that work with commercial off-the-shelf hardware, and they operate, as Supervisor Slocum knows, on general-public license, open-source software. The fact that we have failed to move forward as a county is a bit of an embarrassment, and I hope we can get on the right track here. San Francisco County is moving forward, and there are projects currently in Texas as well as Los Angeles. New Hampshire is the first to actually adopt and deploy a proper open-source system, albeit it is lacking the tabulation aspect, which is perhaps the most important, but at least the Secretary of State there has moved forward. We're hopeful that the county here joins San Francisco in moving forward, and also that we contact Secretary of State Padilla and request that he gets with the Department of Homeland Security on this issue. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Colette Azzapardi. She will be speaking on item #40 on Consent Agenda.
Colette Azzapardi, 140 Tiptoe Lane in Burlingame, an unincorporated area, and I'd like to ask the board, please, if they could remove the subject, the #40, from the Human Resources that is refusing my claim of flooding. My home has been flooded multiple times. I grant due to grant of property to the county under the understanding that would be maintained, repaired, and replaced, and has not been. I also have a letter here dated 2003 from Neil Cullen saying that they would install an overflow flume, which is never done, and my house has been repeatedly flooded. Here is the max pipe showing that is completely maxed out, and I have all the flood pictures of all the mud and my retaining walls that are falling down in the mud and the water underneath my house, and all my floors are, and doors will not open, and I don't think it should be refused because I will have to, you know, I'm tired of the flooding. This is 2010 after a pipe was installed by the county, and it was not maintained, replaced, and repaired, and is maxed out now because of Lastrada Court over-innating the water that's incoming after they built that with no updating the infrastructure. And I would like to ask that you not refuse the claim because I can't handle the water. I had a stroke already, and I'm about ready to have another one. I would like you to reconsider the refusal of this because I'm right down from 101 Tiptoe, which is going to build a 20,000-square-foot house, and I cannot take any more water. And they keep pushing more water down this tube. I have the grant deed here, and I have everything documented. I have all the flood pictures. They are overwhelming to see, if you'd like to see them. I just don't think it should be refused as a claim. If you lived in this home, you, I lost my husband unfortunately to suicide two years ago, and that's why I had a stroke, and here's the flood pictures. And here's my pool filled with mud.
Okay, if you could leave your address, we'll have someone follow up with you.
Okay, it's 140 Tiptoe Lane. Do you leave it like there?
Okay.
Here?
Leave it here with us, and we'll have someone follow it up.
I got it on a sticker.
Okay, thank you.
No more public comment, Mr. President.
Okay, now time to take action to set the agenda and to approve or not approve the Consent Agenda Items as well.
What should we do about item 40?
I think we should leave it.
All right.
For now. So, move the, set the agenda and approve the Consent Agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any legal ramifications to the woman who just spoke to us if we approve this, which would deny her claim? And then do we, is there a way to?
Maybe I can, I'm probably the appropriate person to address that question. I heard the word "legal." So, at this point, I would not recommend that you, you know, not deny this claim. I mean, at this point in time, risk management is recommending denial of that particular claim. That doesn't mean that what follows will not be a conversation and, you know, a further, you know, understanding of the facts that are presented in the claim. So, there'll be an opportunity to meet with this person and really try to dig a little deeper on what's going on.
And we can, as I indicated, we can have somebody from Public Works follow up.
Also, I believe the speaker is a constituent. I wasn't pre, I have not heard of this issue, and I'm happy to work with her and Department of Public Works to further investigate it. And as County Council points out, you know, this process is really kind of an, almost an administrative matter, of course, thing that we do with all claims.
So, there was a motion from Supervisor Pine. Is there a second?
A second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Or abstained?
No, I'm opposed to approving it.
Okay. So, well, we'll now go on to item #9, which is a conversation about Black History Year as from myself, and it's, we are honored to have Dr. Fay McNair-Knox today. Just read a little bit. She has a really extensive resume, but I'll take a few moments just to kind of give, I think, almost all of us know Dr. Fay, but she's the Executive Director of East Palo Alto Neighborhood Improvement Initiative, actually called One East Palo Alto. And she was honored as the Woman of the Year for the, by the California Assembly, and she was cited as having a long history of making a difference in East Palo Alto and the state. And in quotes, "Her agency focuses on youth in East Palo Alto, identifying resources, developing skills, and building family resilience in partnership with more than 50 local organizations, and she's helped foster small business initiatives in the area and has helped teaching at administrative positions at various universities, including Stanford." She's really dedicated, and I think both myself and Supervisor Slocum well know this, she's dedicated to the improvement of youth, students, and her community, and she's really an inspiration to all of us. Graduated from Stanford University, has a PhD from Stanford, and she was a Fulbright Scholar. I give you the very accomplished Dr. Fay McNair-Knox.
It's always humbling to hear your credentials read by somebody, somebody else. I want to thank you, President Horsley, for that warm introduction. And to the Board of Supervisors, many of you I know, some I don't know, seeing for the first time, and especially to the man I like to call my supervisor, the Honorable Warren Slocum. It's a pleasure for me to be here today to participate in this year-long project that President Horsley has put together. I think this is a bold idea to have Black History Month all year long with these kinds of recognitions, and it's exactly these kinds of bold ideas that will bring us, as a community, closer together in developing mutual understanding. And there's no better time to establish that mutual understanding than now. We've gone through a period of changing the landscape of U.S. history, electing our first President of African descent, something many of us felt wouldn't happen in our lifetimes. And there's been a changing of the guard, and there's a lot of uncertainty in the nation about where do we go from here. So, I think that it's very opportune for us to have moments like these and moments that will help us understand better, one-to-one, what the experiences of our diversity in this society really are, to have this mutual understanding. I've been asked to share brief remarks with you about my journey as an African American who has grown up in the United States and finally settled in that village down the road called East Palo Alto, and in the process encourage you to connect, as I do, to Black, or as I like to call it, African-American history as a significant part of American history. To put you in the mood, let me share excerpts from a poem written by the late, great poet and author Mari Evans, who recently made her transition. The poem is entitled "Speak the Truth to the People." Speak the truth to the people; talk sense to the people; free them with honesty; free the people with love and courage for their being. It is not necessary to green the heart only to identify the enemy. It is not necessary to blow the mind only to free the mind. To identify the enemy is to free the mind. A free mind has no need to scream; a free mind is ready for other things. Speak the truth to the people. To identify the enemy is to free the mind. Free the mind of the people. Speak to the mind of the people. Speak truth. So, here is my truth. It has not been easy growing up in these here United States. African-American woman, child of a preacher. In fact, my mother wasn't an official preacher, but I'd say in a lot of ways she outdid my dad in religiosity and commitment to the church. Both of them born and raised in the South, so I'm definitely a Southern child, one generation removed, because early in my life, the family migrated to California. And the family experience, I have five siblings, we were all acculturated to pursue a life of service, and we were told that he or she who would be great must be a servant. So, I'm a baby boomer, a pioneer, a survivor of the '60s, and a participant in what my children like to call ancient history. The student movements, the marches, all of those things that challenged the United States to do what it said, to do what its creed said, to make equality a truth of life in this society. And all of these things sort of settled in to my life in East Palo Alto, where I've learned, where I've lived for over 40 years. I shouldn't tell you that because now you know who I am, but I go, yeah, baby boomer, all right, okay. I have joined the ranks of the elders, and that's a good thing. But East Palo Alto has been a place that I have found I could live out my calling. My calling to be a part of what it would take to make quality of life equally available to people who need it the most. And we have a lot of needs in East Palo Alto, but we also have a lot of people who are willing to roll up their sleeves and do great work to address those needs. I think one of the greatest experiences I have had in recent years is figuring out how to connect at the county level so that, as people like to say, we're better together. And there was a long time that in East Palo Alto, we felt isolated and that we didn't have connections that could help us, that it was all on us. But I dare say in recent years that we have found great partners in San Mateo County, and our community is better for it. East Palo Alto is a wonderful place. I dare you to come over. Come over and experience it. Meet the people there. You'll find that we are lovely people, that we care, that we're more alike with you than we are different. And I believe that is really at the base of Black history. It's about providing the information to demystify what society has done to create barriers between and among us. And since I only have five minutes, I'm going to stay true to that task and let you know that I, as one person, would be one of many willing to speak with you, talk with you, share our experience, exchange, see what we have in common, and move forward together, working to continue to make this society a better place in which to live. Thank you.
I know that both Supervisor Slocum and I have really been to events, you've had graduations of students that you have mentored, and they are always impressive and moving, and I just can't tell you how much we admire the work that you've done with youth in East Palo Alto. So, thanks for that presentation. So, we'll next go on to our 9/15, well, almost not, actually on time, 9/15, it's the reports on the plans and direction for staff on fiscal year 2017-19. I'm going to take these one at a time, and we'll actually, if, I guess we can move on each one of them individually as opposed to all, you know, instead of having them all at the same time. So, we'll start first with the capital projects and the financing plan. Mr. Sacco?
Oh, I think the, initially Doug Koenig will take the beginning of the presentation.
Okay. And you'll tell us how the financing works. Okay. Doug?
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Malpe, Mr. Byers, Mr. Sacco. At the March 28 board meeting, the board directed the Project Development Unit staff to report back with the timelines on eight projects. I guess the first four are reflected here. Our intent is to execute all of the, all eight projects as expeditiously as possible, given the phasing constraints and other budget constraints. The blue indicates the pre-construction activities, consisting of architect, engineer, selection, design, SEQA, et cetera. And the orange or the yellow there indicates the anticipated construction period for each And this low, excuse me, we are, this was truncated a little bit. We had...
I think it was, excuse me, I think it was changed, so we focused on the first four projects that are the San Mateo, Redwood City campus projects.
Okay. Yeah. All right. That shows the timelines. What it doesn't show is the phasing due to the interconnections, which we're trying to depict on this slide. The main catalyst for all these projects is to meet the January 2020 OSHPOD deadline for getting the 54 Building, the Hospital Administration Building into compliance with the California Seismic Safety Act. Our plan to get compliant is to move all of the essential activities into the ground floor, the nursing wing, and then demolish the 54 Building, and then replace that with a new Medical Center Administration Building. We intend to take this plan to OSHPOD on the 26th of this month and hopefully get their blessing for that, as well as recommend an extension to the January 2020 date to allow for better project sequencing. If OSHPOD does grant our extension, then we will move ahead with the renovation of the ground floor of the nursing wing, and then at that point, we will delay future improvements at the Medical Center until COB 3 is complete. What that will do is allow us to move the Health Services Administration staff directly into COB 3, vacating their building, allowing the Hospital Administration staff to occupy the Health Administration Building. At that point, the 54 Building could be demolished and make room for the new Medical Center Admin Building. When that's complete, the Hospital Administration staff could move into the new building, vacate in the old Health Services Building, which we can then demolish, and then complete the site work at the campus. Are there any questions? Now, well, let me make one other point. If OSHPOD denies the request for the extension, then we will be forced to move the Health Services Administrative, excuse me, Administration staff temporarily into leased space. So, at that point, are there any questions?
Any questions? Nope.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want to talk about the next slide? It's the...
Maybe.
It's the rest of the projects.
Okay, I'm sorry, there's the other side. These are the, these are the four remaining projects that we're referring to. And again, the blue indicating pre-construction activities, the orange, the anticipated period of construction.
Okay, thanks, Doug.
So, one question on the Maple Street Homeless Shelter. Have we actually, is it, Supervisor Groom and I have worked on it for some time. Is it on, going to be on the current site, or do we have another site?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
The Maple Street Homeless Shelter, is it on Maple Street, or is it a, have we found a different site for it?
Through the President, let me try to answer that, Doug, and then you could add to that. We're really proceeding on two tracks. One is that it would be built on the present site, but we've also had more recent discussions with the city of Redwood City about the site adjacent to the jail on Maple Street that might well prove even a better site. And if those discussions come to fruition, we would come back with that recommendation to build it on that site. As you know, the city has long wanted a portion of the site where it exists now for their future improvements, and so if we could come to a deal with the city, then we would build it on the Maple Street site. If we can't, then we'll build it on the present site.
Okay, thanks. Supervisor Groom?
Yeah, you know, when we talked about moving it to the Redwoods, the new Redwood City site, we also talked about adding some potential transitional homes. Is that still part of this?
That is.
Okay.
That is, and let me just add one more thing on that. We're already starting our due diligence on the Maple Street site to take a look at any impediments to moving there, doing the borings on the property and all that. So, that work will shortly be underway.
Well, good. I think that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, it does.
Quick in the process.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Koenig. Thank you.
Okay, so now I'll talk about the financing of what's now eight projects. If you recall, last meeting, it was seven, but we added the homeless shelter. I did work with our outside financial advisor, Mark Epstein, in updating the figures. So, these are, the project costs are still the same as what I presented last week, but we've refined and I think done a better job in terms of the capital costs overall. What you see here is, the first column is the construction fund, so those are the costs of the, of the projects. Excuse me. The second column is a capitalized interest, which is essentially, excuse me, the interest that accrues from the time you issue the bonds to the time you actually complete the project. The next column is the Debt Service Reserve Fund. So, this is the reserve that we would need to set aside while we find, while we pay off the debt. Excuse me. And then finally, the cost of issuance. So, this is the cost for the underwriters, the attorneys, disclosure counsel, et cetera. And so you could see, the total cost estimates for all eight projects, including the financing cost, is $444.4 million. So, this is a breakdown now of how we actually fund that $444 million. You could see the $27 million would be from General Fund contributions, $80 million, which would be from Circle Star contributions. Essentially, we would be using up the rest of the Circle Star proceeds. Bonds and borrowing with total $337.4 million, so that gets you to the total of $444.4 million. I'd also like to add that there would be borrowing from the General Fund of about $17.5 million for the Cordillares, the health campus, and the homeless shelter projects, but those would be reimbursed through the financing. So, basically, it's an in and out, it's a wash. And I would also like to add that based on these contributions, we can still maintain a 10% reserve requirement, which is the minimum requirement of the county. And then what you see on the right is the annual debt service. So, and you'll, if you go back to the previous slide, you'll see that the annual debt service actually equals the Debt Service Reserve Fund, which basically, what that means is that the annual debt service requirement is equal to one year's worth of debt service. This is a conservative estimate at this point. I would say that in recent issuances that we've done, we've actually been able to even do a surety bond and not do a reserve fund, and we've also done something called, this is, and this represents maximum annual debt service. We've also been able to do half maximum annual debt service because of the county's strong credit rating. So, we may even be able to create a smaller reserve fund than this, but talked to Mark about it, and we thought it was smart to be conservative and kind of, without knowing really what the bond market's going to look like a year from now, to be more conservative and go with the maximum annual debt service.
If I could just add to what Jim said, you know, we talk a lot about a 10% reserve for the General Fund and other things that are regarded perhaps as conservative that we do, but in the end, it ends up saving us money, as Jim just indicated. You know, we're one of only two or three counties in the state that has AAA rating, and that enables us to borrow money at less cost and also to put less money up front for projects when we need to borrow.
for projects when we need to borrow.
So, some of the financing assumptions that I wanted to go over. So, again, when we go back to this slide and we look at the capitalized interest, again, that's the interest that's paid after the bonds are sold, from the time the bonds are sold to the project is completed. During that time, you still have to pay the investors the interest, and that interest is capitalized. That assumption was based on 30 months. So, we're assuming that from the time construction is completed to the time, or from the time we issue the bonds to the time construction is completed, that on average, it's about 30 months. The other thing I wanted to mention, which I mentioned already, is the reserve fund. We assume maximum annual debt service. And the debt service, we upped it a little bit, again, not knowing what the market's going to look like a year from now. We've gone with 4.75%, 30-year fixed level debt. So, those are the assumptions. And the other thing I do want to make a mention of that is in the board memo, is that for these eight projects, there is no use of Measure K money. This is all general fund financing and Circle Star proceeds. So, with that, I'll leave it to questions on this.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Supervisor Pine?
What is our current annual debt service?
The annual debt service right now is about 55 and a half million dollars a year, and that came from about 30 to 55 because of Maple Street Correctional Center. It is declining rapidly, though, because if you remember when we did Maple Street, we did a declining, so it'll start to drop about 2 million a year in 18, 19.
Right, but to put this number in perspective, it's 55 million today, and this would total an additional 20, 22 million.
22 million, yes, total.
Just to add to that, Mr. President, Supervisor Pine, as I know that you recall, the board also has put an absolute limit on the amount that we could borrow in relationship to the general fund. And this borrowing is well within that limit.
And then one other question. I think I heard you say that the debt service reserve fund could potentially be, right now, I guess it looks like it totals 22 million, but I think I heard you say, for a variety of reasons, it might be half that because of the surety or a good credit rating?
Well, normally speaking, you would, and for years, we did it, you do maximum annual debt service. So, what they do is they look at the overall payment of debt over the life of the bonds, and they take the highest year, and they call that MADS, which is manual, you know, maximum manual debt service. And so, kind of the industry standard, is it generally speaking, borrowers pay the maximum manual debt service. Now, with our credit rating in recent years, we've been able to get by with half MADS or even a surety bond. So, but we're assuming that we're going to pay the maximum for this presentation purposes. The other thing I'd like to add...
Again, just let me add through the president. If we do have a debt reserve fund, or to what extent we have a debt reserve fund, at the end of the day, it comes back to us, but it's obviously 20 or 30 years down the road.
Okay, I wasn't clear on that.
But the money set aside essentially to guarantee that we pay off the debt, and once the debt's paid off, that money comes back to the general fund.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I did want to add one other thing, I'm sorry. On the, on the cost of issuance, these numbers were based on if we were to issue five separate financings. So, there's a lot of costs. If you were to issue a financing with one building or a financing with three buildings, you would still have to produce an official statement. You would still have to do all the, you know, all the disclosure stuff, all the bond counsel. You'd still have to work with the chief, you know, the county's outside financial advisor, et cetera. So, to the extent that we combine these and issue, you know, multiple financings, the cost of issuance will be lower, you know, so I just wanted to bring that up.
Okay. So, any other comments? Any other questions?
Maybe a comment or two. After our study session a couple of weeks ago, we all received, I'm sure, a number of emails from people who saying that we were spending too much on capital projects, and we certainly were not, we were kind of ignoring the housing issue. And I just wanted to say that these are capital projects, and they are expensive, but it's also, we haven't done a lot of these projects in a number of years. We have a very aging health system building. We have a very aging Cordillares Mental Health Center, which needs to be upgraded and needs to be redesigned in how we serve the people in our county who are mentally ill. We have been dealing with the homeless issue for a long time, and we think that this is one of the answers, by building a multipurpose homeless center that will serve more than just several dozen families. We think this is a very important project. Because of the state's rules on seismic issues, we must fix, we must do work at the hospital, and we think that this is the best way to do it, by as we're doing it, reinventing the health system campus, so it will be much more efficient and ultimately will save us money down the road. So, we're not ignoring the housing issue, but we're fixing the county's infrastructure, which really hasn't been looked at in a good number of years, and this will take care of those needs for a long time to come. So, I just wanted to add those comments, Mr. President.
That's well said. You know, I think the only thing, the only project that really was controversial was really the county office building three. But I think people would, they sometimes don't, well, you have to see this in the totality, that it really is because of the health campus at 37th Avenue, having to demolish essentially all of our administrative buildings there because of OSHPOD requirement, and because of the parking situation there is so bad in that neighborhood, we're moving so many of the staff people down to Redwood City. The only way you could do that is actually to have COB3, which, if we also remember that, we actually bought those Circle Star buildings with the idea of using those for office space, but that never really worked out. So, in any case, we ended up, we actually doubled the, we bought it for 40 million, ended up selling it for 80 million, which essentially pays for that COB3. And the parking structure, if you don't think it's needed, all the people who are here, you probably all struggle for parking. That's why we have to build that parking lot. The other is Cordillares, as Supervisor Groom points out, that was built for tuberculosis patients around in the early 20th century, if I'm not mistaken. It's not an appropriate facility for people who are mentally ill. Most people don't realize that we have a pretty extensive hospital for people who are basically psychotic, and it is, the newer design really is designed to actually be much more therapeutic than the old facility. The old facilities is a big concrete facility that was really only meant to be, you know, for a use that we no longer have a need for. So, and you might also think, we had done a lot of questions about this, but we've actually been studying this master plan for a long time. And the project, for example, where we were going to put COB3, we actually, the county bought that a couple decades ago with the idea that eventually we would be building a county office building there. So, it's, in any case, it's, we have been studying this for a long period of time than lots of, all of us have individually looked at it, questioned it, wondered why, and it's, we're now pretty much at that point. So, if there are no other comments, or, so we give a motion to give direction to the...
Yes, I would make, I would make a motion that we approve the construction and financing proposal that's been made to us today.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Okay. So, we'll now go on to information technology plan. Is that...
Mr. President, before Mr. Walton, I just wanted to, Sam?
Sam.
Just walked out the door. I just wanted to compliment the project team, who, as you've said, have been working on this for a long period of time, Deborah Zan, Sam, Doug, the rest of the team. Thank you so much for your work. I know there is a lot of moving parts, and it's been very complicated, and we have studied it a great deal. And just thank you for your, for all your hard work on this project. Thank you.
Thanks, Sam. And the team as well. So, Mr. Walton?
Good morning, I'm John Walton, CIO for the county. Appreciate President Horsley, Supervisor Groom, Supervisor Slocum, Supervisor Canepa, Supervisor Pine. Morning, Mr. Sacco, Malby, and Byers. Just a quick update for you. I know you have a lot on your agenda to cover today, but we did want to take an opportunity to go over the vision for the future for technology in the county. We've made a lot of changes in the past few years to the technology in the county, and as you know, technology is an integral part in how the departments provide services to our customers and the citizens of the county. So, we want to just take a few minutes of your time and go over what the current plan is and the goals of the departments in the coming years, in the next two years. Just to let you know where we're at in the journey of technology in this county, we have established a five-year vision that's published on the internet site. It's called the Five Year Technology Plan for the County. We had a consultant come in and help us develop that in partnership with the departments. Part of that process was to establish a governance board to guide the decisions and the goals of technology in the county. We call it the IMPC, Information Management Planning Council. We meet on a regular basis. It's department heads, and they're designees, where you get together and talk about what are the goals of the departments and what does ISD need to do as sort of an underlying foundation to support those goals as they move forward. The recommendations you're going to see today in the presentation are really an outcome of those conversations. We spent a lot of time meeting with departments and talking about their needs and goals for the future. Several themes came up as we had conversations with departments about commonalities of things that they were seeing across departments that were driving some of the technology needs as we move forward into the future. One is having a more mobile workforce and mobile solutions. A lot of our staff in the county spend time in the field, whether it's health or public safety and public works and things like that, and so a desire to continue to implement and evolve technologies and solutions that enable people to do their work while they're in the field and not have to return to their office and log into a traditional PC. Access from multiple sources, people want that always connected, always available solutions. So, again, you're going to see projects that enable that, that no matter where you're at, whether it's a public PC or a tablet or a phone or your traditional workstation at your desktop, that you're able to access information and do your work from a multiple variety of sources. Document management has been around for a long time. We've all heard about that. We continue, I think, to try to find ways to replace our paper technologies with electronic technologies, and departments are still exploring that. The volume of paper has decreased over time, but still, we see technologies that enable us to take some of the old information we have in paper form that's still very valuable, a lot of the work we do. The historic perspective is important, and so we want to digitize a lot of that old paper technology and make it electronic so that as departments do their work, they're able to reflect back on that without having to store things in boxes or large file cabinets or take up valuable office space with storage. Network bandwidth and Wi-Fi availability, as we push these technologies out, the bandwidth, how much network, whether it's wired or wireless, that we need increases dramatically. We've already done a tenfold increase in that in the past four years, and we're looking forward to another tenfold increase in the coming few years. Moving to the cloud, of course, we're looking for a balance there between what applications do we install locally and what data do we manage locally internal to our network and our data center for security and confidentiality purposes. There are opportunities, like you saw with the email system we recently implemented and the Workday ERP system and solutions like that that are cloud-based, that save us time and money in spinning up these systems. GIS is an emerging conversation where we've traditionally had GIS set up in individual departments, geared towards individual department needs. Departments still will continue to evolve GIS on a department-by-department basis to meet their individual goals, but we're also looking forward to continuing to build out sort of this enterprise view of GIS where all of the data can be shared and merged with the public and between departments at an enterprise level. And then last but not least, I'm sure in all the study sessions you've talked about and our vision for the future in the county, we all know that we live in a very seismically active area, and so we're really focused in ISD and working with departments on how do we secure these applications as we invest in them to ensure that in the case of a disaster, this information will be available and recoverable and that we won't lose our valuable information in the case of a disaster. So, with that, what we did is we went out and we asked the departments, money being no object, and you could have anything you wanted, what would you like to do in the next five years? And what that brought was really a wish list, if you will, of things departments saw would be valuable to implement in the coming five years. And it's really hard, as you all know, to predict in a technology landscape what five years from now is going to look like. If we look back to where we were five years ago, none of us could have predicted some of the rise of some of these technologies and the popularity of those. But we asked and challenged departments to do that, and what they did was they came up with about 150 IT projects across all departments county-wide that they thought would be valuable to implement in the coming five years. And we asked them to give us a rough estimate of what they thought those projects would cost. Now, keep in mind that this is without the use of RFPs or getting actual quotes, so it's really a best estimate from staff. And so, some high-level numbers came out of that I wanted to share with you because it was in some former memos that were distributed, and I just didn't want to cause any confusion. But if you took the wish list of 150 projects, roughly it added up to about $85 million in one-time capital expenditures and about $46 million ongoing operational commitment when you look at staffing and licensing and refresh of those technologies that were purchased. As you know, through all the conversations about the budget, we don't have the capacity to do 150 projects in two years, nor do we have the funds available to do that. But I think it starts to give you a sense of the forward-leaning vision of what county departments would like to do. And so, anything that we don't show you today in these slides, being recommended for the next two years, you'll probably hear about again two years from now, as departments say, well, okay, well, it didn't get done this two-year cycle, so we want to talk about it again in the coming cycles. In summary, then, what we're recommending for the coming two years is really 42 projects. And what we tried to break it down by is really where were the projects funded internally by departments, meaning they had saved up money or they had found ways to reallocate funds with their existing budgets. And so, those were ones that we approved or are recommending for approval that are funded from within their current operating budgets of the departments. So, those are shown as the $27 million in departmentally funded projects. We're asking for a $10 million continued investment over the next two years, $5 million each year, out of Measure K for the underlying infrastructure improvements, bandwidth and security and connectivity that's needed to make those departments able to move data around and have the bandwidth they need to operate those applications. There are several projects that are being asked for from a non-departmental one-time funding source that departments have discussed with Mr. Sacco and the county manager's office about one-time funding for non-departmentally funded projects, and we'll show you those in a minute. And then an additional number of projects from Prop 172, public safety-related funds that we'll also talk about. So, the total there is about $65 million one-time and capital expenditures over the next two years. I would say the thing that I really was thinking about when we were looking at these is, you know, capital funds are a one-time problem we need to solve, but you also always have to keep in mind is what's that long-term commitment then, and keeping those things maintained and supported. And the good news there is that a lot of these projects that the departments had already thought through sort of their existing operational budget and how to address the ongoing operational support expenses of these projects, and so that the ongoing commitment on behalf of the county from an operational cost standpoint is less than $1 million each year to support the $65 million of one-time investments. So, if you will bear with me, I'll go through these quickly because I don't think you want me to go into every project in excruciating detail, but I've got about four slides that just touches on each of the projects that make up that $65 million in one time. And then I'm sure, you know, we'll have a discussion at the end, and we can, we've invited the departments to come as well in case you have specific questions about departmental projects. But to just do my speed reading here, we have spent, we have recommended funding for the Assessor County Clerk for Quarter's Office for assessing and moving forward with replacing the voting system that has been talked about. There is a continued investment to search for and assess the needs for a new assessor system. As you know, we went out to RFP, but weren't able to find a single system to meet all our needs, so we're going to continue to invest some one-time money to look for that solution. They have an RFP out on the street now that should be coming back soon. Easy access is a system they currently use to do part of their business, and they're needing to upgrade that system until they find this new solution. So, they're... needing to upgrade that system until they find this new solution. So we're going to recommend some investment in that to keep that up to date and operational for them. The GIS for the Assessor's Office is very important. It's the parcel base map that all the other departments use as a reference layer. So they're going to be investing some money to making that data better. Image preservation goes back to taking the old paper documents and digitizing those and keeping those up to date. The manager's office is looking to replace our current budget system with a new one. And so we've set aside some funds for that. Controller's Office, again, sort of the third leg of the stool in the property tax system. Again, we didn't find a single solution that met all the departments' needs, so they also have an RFP on the street. It'll be coming back soon. And so hopefully we're able to find a solution that meets the Controller's Office needs to replace the old system. The DA's Office has set aside some funds in their budget to continue to enhance their case management system in their department. Health, as you would suspect, is a very large department with a lot of needs to automate and update the applications, especially as it relates to what the federal government passes as laws and regulations for managing patient data and things like that. And health has done a very good job, obviously, setting aside funds within their existing departmental budget to update a lot of their critical applications, which is shown on this slide as the $11 million investment they are prepared to make in the next two years to update the software in their department. The Department of Housing needs to refresh some of their technology for their staff within their department, and so they've set aside some funds in theirs. Human Resources, as you would suspect, is a holder of a lot of older paper data, so they want to digitize a lot of that and get more automated in how they manage those documents. Human Services, again, like health, has a lot of application demands where they have needs to update their internal applications. And so they've set aside money within their departmental budget to update the applications they use for their workers to work with their customers. Jen, you'll see GIS popping up for Parks, as you would suspect. Parks is a big user of GIS and has a need to make maps and have their own data layers as it relates to the GIS system. So we're recommending some funding for them to update their GIS information. Department Planning and Building has some money they want to continue to invest in their case management system for the system they have currently, and they want to enhance that. Probation, as I'm sure you've heard from talking with the probation department, is still working hard to get the PIMS project wrapped up and completed so that they have that system implemented in their department and up to date. And so we are recommending money. And in this case, as I noted, this kind of is the first time I think you'll see this, is actually recommended to come out of the Prop 172 funds rather than departmental or non-departmental. For public safety, again, enhancing and looking forward to the new functionality of a 911 system. In Public Works, again, GIS and some more investments around our physical enhancing, the Cardkey. JCI is our cardkey reader system that ISD works closely with Public Works on. The Sheriff's Office, mobile readers and investment in their fingerprinting system. And then in property tax, this is the first piece. Remember, there are three departments that really play a key role in the property tax system in the county. This is the RFP that they selected Grant Street Technologies to be the new hosted application that many of the counties in Florida use to do tax systems in Florida, very thoroughly vetted by the tax department and our consultants. And so this is a significant investment we're recommending we make on behalf of the county to do this project in the coming two years and get the tax department on this new system. And then, last but not least, my favorite department, Information Services Department. Again, the GIS here isn't different than the other ones, really. This is the core team that really pulls together the technologies, the enterprise agreements, the server infrastructure to manage and consolidate all the GIS data from the different departments. Marshall Data Center, just to make the linkage, you saw on the previous presentation, we have set aside money to build a new radio shop. Public Works is working on that, and that was in the list of projects you saw in the previous presentation. But until then, we'll be at the Marshall Data Center for both the radio shop and our data center until the new radio shop is built and we relocate our data center back to a new regional operations center. We are going to continue to invest in Measure K projects. I have a little breakout of that in a minute here about infrastructure. Mobile security, as I said, mobility is a big focus for the departments, and that's something we want to support them on. So we're going to continue to enhance the security around our mobility. We're working with the County Council's Office on how to do that, ensure that the data that is shared and moved around is secure and is well-managed. Radio upgrade and regional operations support, there's a number of enhancements we need to make to the radio system to ensure that when the ROC goes live, that all the newest technology can be used in that facility. And so again, there's some Prop 172 funds that we've worked with the county manager's office to set aside to make sure that those radio enhancements are done, so that we're using the best technology possible between the consoles in the regional operations center, out through the radio system, and that we have the best technology in that center. And then we're recommending some additional investments in the SharePoint tools we use. SharePoint is a Microsoft product that we've seen a lot of growth in in the past year where people are using that as a document repository now. So as they digitize data and try to share data with each other, SharePoint's becoming a much more common tool for departments to use, and we want to make sure we support that. So my last slide before we get to all questions is just to recap briefly. Again, we're requesting some Measure K funds because we've done a lot of investment, as you can see on the left, in the last two or three years around enhancing some of the underlying infrastructure technologies that enable both the citizens and our people we serve to access the county data. As we put more stuff, more and more things online, we need to provide them ways to get to that information. So we do that through our Wi-Fi projects. We also want to make sure we have the underlying technologies through backup and data recovery, fiber networking, to make sure that all these applications, which are great new applications, are very powerful, have the bandwidth they need to operate well, and people aren't waiting and waiting and waiting and watch the little circle spinning on their desktop. And then, so for the future, we're going to continue to expand the fiber network. When I came here, we had exactly one pair of fiber that ran between here and the medical center. We've connected 13 key county sites to the fiber already, and we're looking to connect at least another 15 more in the next two years. The bandwidth, like I said, we want to more than doubled it, and we're probably going to double it again in the coming year. Out-of-area disaster recovery, we're looking at a couple of options to cost-effectively have a backup site in Sacramento, so that if there is a disaster here on the peninsula or in the Bay Area, that all of our key applications and data would be safely protected in the Sacramento area and easily accessible. We're going to replace the phone system in the next two years. As you know, we're on very old Nortel PBXs for the phone system. And now that we have the fiber in place that will allow a voice-over-IP system and the technology in place, we're looking forward to giving you a new phone system that integrates tightly with your email and your mobile devices so that, you know, as easy as your email has become to use on your iPhones and iPads, we want to make using the voicemail system equally easy to use. Continue to expand Wi-Fi. We have about 60 sites still requested, and we just had a great meeting with the school district the other day and talked about a closer partnership between the county and the school district about where the county could be infilling in some areas so that kids can do their homework in the afternoons and evenings without having to be at the schools. And then continuing to try to leverage the new technology for video conferencing. We still see that as a big demand. We see a lot more use of it now that we've gone to the new email system where that video connectivity is sort of pre-enabled. But at a conference room level and to external partners, we want to make sure we continue to take advantage of technology to reduce the amount of time staff, spending cars, driving from site to site. So with that, I know your time is valuable, and that's the end of my slides, and happy to take any questions.
Thank you. There was lots of details there. Supervisor Plank, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you. So, Mr. Walton, so the proposal here for the next two fiscal years is $65.5 million. How much did we spend on IT projects in the prior two fiscal years?
I would say, I couldn't say county-wide, but I would say out of ISD-managed funds, close to $30 million in the past two fiscal years.
I'm trying to get kind of an apples-to-apples comparison. I've been trying to get a sense for how much we're growing our IT investment. So is it fair to...
Through the President, I think I could try to answer that. I think if you include the health system, which are many independent projects, you're probably in the same ballpark of $60 to $65 million for the previous two-year period.
Okay. And as you've pointed out, the property tax system for the assessor and controllers, we're not going to see that anytime in the next two fiscal years, right? That's a big item.
That is, yeah.
The treasurer part of it is $14.5 million alone. So those, I think from the day I arrived here, there was concern that those systems were on their last legs, and we're kind of in jeopardy of things melting down. And I know you've assured us many times it's not going to happen, but we're not going to get those systems in place in the next two fiscal years because those aren't budgeted for.
There's no way financially or technically at this point, because we haven't selected the other pieces of solutions to do that in the next two years. So we're working closely with all three departments, ISD and county managers, to make sure that we do pick the right technologies, but also that we keep the old technologies viable until we find those replacements.
And my final question, I'm a little concerned about the radio upgrade and ROC support. In the memo for this meeting, it says that that wasn't funded, but then there's a $6 million entry here. And then I also understand some of this is funded by a JPA. So I'm having a hard time getting the whole picture there.
I'll let John talk about the radio project as it impacts the CAD, but there's also a bigger countywide radio system. We replaced it back in 2001, and that would include funding from the other cities as JPA members.
That's something different.
Yeah, I think, do you want to...
Yeah.
Just for the CAD is a computer-aided dispatch for police and fire.
Thank you.
Yeah. So the project Mr. Sacco is referring to is when we migrated and we wrapped up the initial migration of the radio system, we went from what we call analog technology to digital technology about three years ago, right after I first started here. And that was roughly a $15 million project to move off the old analog system onto the new Motorola digital radio system. When we did that, it was a combination of county funds, JPA funds, and federal grant funds that we used to do that initial upgrade. With the new project with the ROC coming online now, there's a desire to not only upgrade the facilities, but to use the newer technologies that we didn't initially license from Motorola to integrate with the dispatch system. So dispatch system, my understanding is, and I should probably let someone from public safety speak to this who's more knowledgeable about that specific system, but is also an older technology that they're looking to replace. Assuming we go with the new dispatch consoles and a new dispatch system in the coming years, even the current radio system we have needs to be upgraded to the newest Motorola standard. It's really a software upgrade, but it is expensive. I won't...
Okay. It's an independent project.
It's an independent. So the JPA still works closely with us on the day-to-day operational costs of public safety radios, but this is a decision we would make as a county to take advantage of that new technology in the ROC.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Supervisor Groom?
Thank you. John, could you explain a little bit more about mobile workforce and mobile solutions?
Absolutely, Supervisor Groom. The goal is really to take the applications you see on your desktop at your desk, on the PC, and move them to your tablet or to your phone. And so the newer technologies we're looking at when we talk to departments about is, in the past, the way those technologies have been sold to customers, ourselves included, is that you had one version for the desktop and a different version for your tablet and a different application for your phone. And because technology has continued to evolve, what we're seeing now is through the use of things like virtual desktops and things like that, that we could have the same application run with the same appearance, the same look and feel on multiple devices. And so it does take some thought about when we select solutions and when we integrate new technologies, make sure that they're secure, that the interface through our portal, login portal, that your username and password will be the same for all those, so we don't get these disparate, you have to remember 20 passwords for everything type of scenario. And that's what we're really looking for from a mobility, access anytime, anywhere, that you could use your same name and same password and log into these applications no matter what device you were on.
Thank you.
Sure.
Supervisor Slocum?
Thank you, Mr. President. This was probably directed toward Mr. Maltby, if I could. Once again, if I got these numbers right, $65.5 million invested in IT projects during the last two years. And at least speaking for myself, I don't think there's ever been a report back on that $65 million expenditure and how those systems went and are they successful? Are they, you know, are they having difficulty? And I guess I'm just asking if that could be included in Mr. Sacco's to-do list or somebody's to-do list?
Sure. We could bring that back. I think you've probably seen bits and pieces of it in terms of, for instance, criminal justice. As those departments have gone online off the old system, we've updated you with department reports. And also, the hospital board has seen with respect to the health system, those projects as they've come online. But we'll put the whole package together so the board can see it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And then just a couple of quick questions on this... I guess it's on page four, the departmental list. Starts off with Assessor County Clerk Recorder and then goes down to Tax Collector. The total cost for the Tax Collector system is $9 million plus the $5 million, I'm assuming. Yeah, is that right?
Roughly $14 million total cost for that system.
Okay. And do you happen to know, I know the Tax Collector is here, I think, but do you happen to know, just curious, when they did the national search and decided on the firm in Florida, I think it was, was it, did that system meet all the requirements for California tax assessing, or were there things that had to be workarounds or enhancements in order to make Florida's system work in California?
I'm just looking to see if anybody from taxes here. But I'll give you my opinion, and then I think I saw Rob and Elliot, maybe she can chime in as well. That company actually had started in Florida, had done a lot of tax systems in Florida, met all their needs, and actually had sent out, had decided California was a target market for them for the future. So it spent a year before we issued our RFP preparing their system to meet all of the tax rules of California and had done that development. So we're not, in a sense, paying for the development to do that. So I believe it meets it, but I should probably let Rob chime in and give her an opinion from an expert.
My real question is, well, that was my real question, but let me ask it a different way. In any of these systems, like the property assessment system or the remote medication dispensing system or the whatever, it would seem rare that there's a perfect match between departmental requirement and system. Is that more or less?
It's an important nuance. You're right. Typically, what companies will sell you is a basic system that meets some of your needs but is configurable to meet your other needs. And I think perhaps the conversation is, are we developing something from the ground up that's never existed before? So in a sense, we're co-developers with a software company. Or are we taking a basic solution that they have and painting it the right color or customizing it slightly to meet our needs? And in the case of the tax system, I think it's the latter where it meets the majority of our needs, and they've done a lot of work. In some of these other systems, you're right, I don't think there is a perfect solution. And the departments that are doing those projects are going to have to work closely with the software development company to almost create a new solution for them.
Thank you. If the Tax Collector wanted to add, that satisfies my curiosity, but...
Yeah, I'll just add one other thing. We will have to do some minor configuration in the system, but as is, we did a pretty extensive documentation of our requirements prior to going out for RFP, and this system did meet the majority of our requirements. There were very few, and what wasn't met was more sort of a wish list than like a legal requirement. But in addition to upfront meeting our requirements, part of the service agreement with this company is that, I'm sure as you're aware, legislation changes constantly. And so yearly, we're getting new requirements added or adjustments to existing requirements. And part of the agreement with this company is that as time goes on and legislation changes, they will make those adjustments to the system as part of our service. So there's no additional programming costs or anything like that. So not only does it meet our requirements now, but long-term, it will also be developed to meet our requirements as they emerge, so...
Thank you. Mr. President, I don't want to give away anything about how long I've served in county government, but...
It's a long time.
But it's been a long time. But I remember when those AS400s were purchased and that software was acquired, and that was a long, long time ago. And so I'm totally supportive of the tax collector's system replacement. I know it's required. Just if I could have another minute or so?
A minute.
Yeah, a minute. I'm just curious of what this means, easy access interim solution for, it looks like 2.5 million on the list here.
That's a typo on my part, actually, interim, in the sense that, again, they have a, I think, easy access will be replaced by their future system. But I don't know if Randy Terrell is here or Jim Isari, maybe they can talk about their vision for the future.
But it is an easy, well, let Mr. Isari talk.
If I may, good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. Mr. Church is not here this morning. He's on a well-earned vacation on spring break with his young daughter in Lake Tahoe. So he will be here at the next meeting. Regarding easy access and the presentation that you've had before you, I would like to make sure that we keep on the radar, the fact that the assessor's property tax system is literally on its last leg. Easy access, when our Director of IT presented the 2.5 million proposal that you had before you, he categorized it as life support. Easy access is not functioning. It is not functioning well. It does not provide the tools to our assessors, nor to the public or this board. We have estimated in the IPC, IMPC process, the replacement of the assessor's property tax system is at $42 million. Keep in mind that we have city, excuse me, County of Riverside and other counties that are spending in excess of $100 million on their systems. And that's after repeated mistakes that they have gone through that process. It's a very complex, it's a very complicated process, as you all know, Supervisor Slocum. We are right now at a very unique opportunity for the county. We have perhaps one of the leading experts in replacement of legacy systems in our department, Randy Mellon. I can, you know, give him the floor so you can ask him any questions, but we have done extensive work to replace this system. We're going out for an RFP. We are out for an RFP, excuse me. That has been out, and we are in the process of discussing that with vendors. We hope to be able to make a decision this fiscal year on a vendor. And we are at a unique opportunity, as I mentioned, with the staff that Mr. Mellon has put together to move this project forward in the next two years.
Thank you. I appreciate the answer. Let me ask the question this way. We're going to give easy access $2.5 million to keep the old legacy system on life support, basically is what I understood.
Correct.
Okay, got it. Final question, getting, you know, the signal over here, but on the voting system replacement, are we going to take into account, or are you going to take into account anything that Mr. Deckert has been speaking to us about in terms of this open source software that San Francisco is developing? Or is that not on your radar yet?
It is on our radar. What we do have is, right now, we've been looking at the RFI and RFP that Orange County has put together. As you know, Orange County has a heart intercivic system, and they're in the process of replacing their legacy system. And we are looking at how we might be able to utilize that process that they've initiated. In that process is an open source component in terms of we are welcoming vendors of all categories to submit proposals. So the open source concept is one that we are looking at, and then we will make a decision once we get the RFI and the RFP completed.
Thank you. But the Orange County solution would be vendor-driven, open source, is that the idea or mine?
No, it would be, we don't know yet. Right now, we attended a conference last week, and they had both open source vendors there and they had traditional proprietary vendors, and the jury's still out on that one.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Isari. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other questions?
May I just make a qualification? Hi, I'm Randy Mellon. Directly to the easy access 2.5 million, as part of the IMPC planning, that was a fallback position in the event that we could not select a vendor to move forward with the new APAS system. You would not spend both. It's in there as a fallback position. We do not need to uplift that system $2.5 million. If our RFP moves forward, right now, we released an RFP on February 28th. We're expecting responses back on May 15th. We believe it to be a three-year project, somewhere in the range of, as Jim said, about 30 million to 42 million as best we could estimate now. We hope it comes in at the lower end, and we'll have a better view of that on May 15th.
Thanks.
Just to make clear, understood, so you're not sure you're going to spend this 2.5?
That is correct. If we get approval to move forward with a three-year replacement project, that would be our preference.
Okay. But a note that that money then would go toward the replacement system.
Oh, okay, yes. It'd be redirected.
I have, if you've noticed, the county council's come up and talked to me a couple times. Reason is that I have a whole bunch of speakers' cards, and I didn't, actually, I read all of them, and they all look like they're on affordable housing. But if somebody in that pile of public comments wanted to speak about capital projects, could you raise your hand, then I would take you now? Well, I know you, I'm going to get you in a minute, Brent. I know you want to come up and speak about this. Mr. Walton, thanks. There, all of you, I think, wanted to speak on housing, and that's why I didn't call anybody up for that. But there are two, there's one person who came in late for a public comment, and I would allow that person now, Cecily Taylor and then Brent Turner wanted to speak on this item.
Good morning, and thank you for letting me speak, and I do apologize for being late. My name is Cecilia Taylor. I'm a resident in Menlo Park, and there are a few items that I wanted to bring up. One of them is, a part of what residents in Menlo Park have been trying to work towards is integrity, transparency, accountability, and equity from the city level and the county level. And a part of that is, the community where I live, the Bellhaven neighborhood, does not have representation on city council. Because of that, a lot of our issues get bypassed, and so that's something I want to bring up on a county level. Also, thinking about the $700 million that is in your hands. Essentially, my idea is that we look at immediate solutions. A lot of affordable housing, we're looking at building. Well, what about things that have already been built? And a lot of the development agreements in the County of San Mateo do not include enough affordable housing, which is one of the problems. We have a housing supply currently that is vacant in probably, I would assume, every city in San Mateo County. And we need to go to those developers and ask for a percentage of those to be affordable, and then maybe create a pot of funding out of that 700 million that would pay for the subsidy, so that the people who are homeless today can be housed tomorrow. In five years, we have no idea where those families will wind up, and we just need to be a little bit more aggressive in our solutions. Building more housing isn't necessarily the solution for today. Looking at current housing supply is a solution for today. The other piece that I wanted to talk about is Measure A funds. In Menlo Park, we have been trying to find where they are because they get absorbed. And is there some type of oversight on the county level to make sure that each city is spending those funds appropriately? Thank you very much for taking me.
Thanks for your comments. And Brent Turner?
Yes, hello again, Supervisors, and so I don't have to take any more of your time than necessary today. I just wanted to say I align myself with Diana Reddy and the folks that are here on the housing issue. But on this issue of election systems, you know, I heard from Mr. Isari that the great leader of civil rights and election system security in America, Orange County, is now being looked at as the leader on this. And of course, we want to just put that to bed right now and say that San Mateo County in the heart of Silicon Valley is the thought leader when it comes to technology, not Orange County. And it should be noted that Neil Kelly, the registrar in Orange County, is also the head of CA/CEO, the Clerk's Business League, and their lobbyist, Barry Brokow, is also a lobbyist for Microsoft. When I heard the woman earlier being honored for Black History Month, she said, "Speak to your enemy. Microsoft is the enemy to open source." So the problem is that when we're doing all this business with Microsoft here in the county, that is getting in the way of the national security effort to secure the election systems. So we're at this crossroads right now where we're either going to have to decide, are we beholden to Microsoft incorporations when it comes to counting our votes? Or are we going to move toward open source software that allows us the proper security? This is something San Mateo County has to lead on. San Francisco's already doing it. We don't want to schlep off to talking about Orange County or some of these pretend open source vendors. The idea is to take control of the situation, build our own system here. If we take that $5 million and give it back to DIBO-type vendors, I think that's the definition of insanity. We know that there is intrusion in our elections, and we can't allow ourselves to be vulnerable continually. Thank you.
Thank you, Brent. Just my comment on information technology. The one thing I really, you know, a lot of these things, frankly, probably should spend some time with Mr. Walton personally, but the public Wi-Fi expansion has been really remarkably successful. I know that, for example, and it went down, it was a fire on the Pescadero store, which where we had the equipment on top of that building. And so our Wi-Fi went out at Pescadero. And after a couple of weeks, I started getting messages from families and their kids saying, "My kid can't do his homework," or "She can't do her homework. When is it going to get back up?" So this is, it's, it just is remarkably successful, and so, you know, we did these kinds of things in areas where people had less access to Wi-Fi, and it has been something that now communities really depend on. So expanding it, I think, is just a fabulous project.
It's been a big help to the big lift, Supervisor Horsley.
That's great. So what's the pleasure of the Board on Information Technology Plan?
Go ahead. I guess I'd like to make a suggestion. The difficulty with IT is it's just an insatiable beast.
Very tough.
And, you know, it's $130 million over the last four years if we spent 65 from the prior two and 65 more. And I know we're going to have this difficult discussion, we're going to have a lengthy discussion about housing, and I think there's going to be some sentiment, I would predict, to increase that. So I think maybe we should hold off on this IT approval because, you know, we might want to pare it down 5% or something.
Just go ahead. Supervisor Slocum, would there be a way to think about it so that it's incremental instead of putting, I forget the number right now, but?
65?
65 million, just in one whack to do, you know, like maybe those high priority items that have to be addressed or?
Yeah, I can't speak to that, but I, in general, since, you know, we have to make, we have to have this housing discussion, and I guess I'd like to have, consider whether this IT budget is appropriate in light of other demands that we have, like housing.
So is the pleasure of the Board to put it off for a period of time until such time as perhaps have another meeting on this?
Well, I don't know if we have another meeting. I'm just saying that we're going to talk about housing, and, you know, if the Board wants to increase it, I mean, that money has to come from someplace to increase it. So one possible place, I'm not saying this is going to happen, I don't know what the will of the Board is, there are other places to get the money from, but one possibility would be to take 5% of the IT budget and put in housing. So for that reason, I'd just kind of like to hold off. I don't think it has to be put off to another meeting, although I think Supervisor Slocum's recommendation is a good one, because, you know, you think about roughly 130 million over four years, we probably should have, probably should have, you know, a study session on it. It's a pretty serious investment. So, yeah, it's just a timing issue, Mr. President, on the, because of the housing question we've yet to sort through.
Okay. Go ahead. Just Supervisor Slocum? Yeah, excuse me. Just out of curiosity, then, how would a department like the tax collector that we spoke about have some confidence that they can move forward?
We'll vote today, for sure. We're going to vote today on it. But again, just saying hypothetically, you know, maybe we approve 62 million instead of 65. And obviously, certain things have to happen. You have to fund the assessor. That 14 million is solid. I mean, I didn't have a chance to ask, it's probably not worthy getting into, do it too much unless it's the will of the Board to go there after we discuss housing, but I know the question to Mr. Walton would be, of the 65 million, if you had to cut five, what would it be? You know?
Well, yeah, I was thinking the same thing. I don't know that I want to cut anything.
I don't either, yes.
But what if it were prioritized?
Right.
Yeah, same question.
Yeah, just maybe we ask Mr. Walton, as he's sitting here, to start doing some prioritization.
I think he probably is going to be starting to think about that right now. Okay.
Okay, so we need a motion?
I don't think we, I don't, I don't think we need a motion on that yet. So I'm just going to go on to the next item of the Affordable Housing Plan. Before we do that, could we have a five-minute break? Sorry. Okay, we're back in session from that brief break, and now to talk about the Affordable Housing Plan. Are you going to do the Affordable Housing Plan first or Measure K at the same time or what?
I think, my understanding is Peggy's going to do the Affordable Housing first.
Okay.
Members of the Board, Mr. Byers, Mr. Sacco. My name is Peggy Jensen. I'm Deputy County Manager, and I'm joined here today by Ken Cole, who is the Director of our Department of Housing. We will be presenting the study session, or we're leading the study session on funding for affordable housing. Our presentation this morning includes three components. We're going to start out by reviewing for you what has been accomplished over the past four years on affordable housing initiatives that your Board adopted. Those, there are four different initiatives. One was around development of new affordable housing units. One was the Red Bull Preservation Pilot Program. The third was a variety of programs focused on tenant assistance, and the fourth is planning, zoning, and public engagement initiatives. The second part of our presentation will outline housing funding principles, and those principles were developed based upon our analysis of the results and the costs of the programs that have been operating for the past four years. And then finally, we are going to present to you some recommendations on the allocation of the $30 million of Measure K funding that's been set aside for affordable housing based upon those principles. So now I'd like to turn over the presentation to Mr. Cole.
Good morning, President Horsley, Honorable Members of the Board, Mr. Seiko, Mr. Maltby, Mr. Byers, executive staff. It's my pleasure to be here. I'll move through our slides quickly, but it's budget season, as you well know, so I will be speaking about unit numbers of housing and dollars. But what we're really speaking about this morning, and you'll hear it in public comment, is about people. It's about families. It's about where do people live? It's about the fabric of our community. And when it comes to affordable housing, our county does nothing in isolation. We do everything in partnership, and our partners are in the room. And you'll see in the numbers that we provide some strategic funding, but they provide the bricks and mortar and get the projects done. So I'll give you a quick outline of our county funding for housing since 2012. The total pie in that period is, we've expended or allocated and spent 56.5 million. So that $56.5 million has been used primarily for new housing development, affordable housing development, and rental housing preservation. The Affordable Housing Fund, when we get into the, the new development, the bricks and mortar, we've expended or allocated $28.8 million of that larger share. And this slide is a very important one to show that in the early years of the Affordable Housing Fund, 2013-14, we were spending redevelopment boomerang funds, which was a tremendous commitment by your Board to bring those dollars back when the state made the terrible decision to shut down the redevelopment agencies. Now, the blue is redevelopment boomerang funding. The burgundy, I'm slightly colorblind, so I'm just gonna call it burgundy, is our moving to work funds. And moving to work funds are from our Housing Authority. And they were a one-time-only strategic decision that the Housing Authority was able to make, this Board as the Commissioners made that decision. And we put those dollars into our bricks and mortar new development for affordable housing. The green portion of the bar chart is showing you the use of Measure A funds now in the subsequent years. And in 2016-17, Measure A became a much more important part of the development process in our community. In affordable housing in our community, leveraging is the key. So we take very precious local dollars from our tax measures and a little bit of federal funding, and we put it in with our nonprofit and for-profit partners to create housing. The development funding, though, is much greater than our portion. And I just use this chart to show that the total development in this period of time has been 40, 480 million. And our county share, our strategic funding, has been only 11%. The, this shows you again that we use our dollars to lever, leverage and our nonprofit partners to exceptional work, to get the rest of the dollars. And the primary engine in development, of course, is the tax credit program. And I'd also point out that the cities have come in with 9%. And the cities in our, in our county will use land at times, and they will also use home, CDBG, or other funding available to them. The per-unit share is an important way we look at our investment and from 2012 coming to present time, we've been at about $60,000 per unit on the development of hard units. Now, where have these projects gone? Our, our RFP, our, our funding process, request for proposals, does not designate areas to build. But it's been interesting to see where those units have gone, and they've largely spread out through the county. Some in unincorporated, some in the, in the cities in our county. We're currently, with our partners, reaching close to 1,000 units. We're on our way to 1,000 hard units since 2012. It's a slow process to get these built, but our dollar, our dollars go in and as the nonprofit partners put it together, we eventually get through planning, through construction, and to complete lease-up units and people housed. So we have, you have designated funds into this pipeline. And because you've put dollars into the pipeline, you've encouraged development. And we're seeing that we're getting, we're getting more projects and more ideas in, good ideas. So we want to keep that pipeline going.
Mr. Cole, I'm sorry, what's the timeline for that? How long have we been doing that?
This is a window, this is the 2012 to the present time. In, in new construction, new development. Using GIS, we're beginning to map these projects. And I know that's an eye test for anybody in the seats, but it'll be available online. And it's just, again, to show you that we are getting these projects out in different parts of the county and, and cities. So we're getting a good spread. Very important as to who is housed. And certainly, everybody understands affordability. Everybody understands that even teachers and firefighters are struggling with affordability, let alone maintenance workers and hotel maids. So, in addition to that overall affordability problem, we are also looking for how can we get housing units to provide, to be provided for special needs, for supportive housing, and for our clients who come through our healthcare system, come through our, our county substance abuse or mental health system. So this graph shows you in that same time period that we have been, with our partners, able to stimulate about 27% of the units into supportive housing units. Again, spread through that base of projects. We'd like to do more, but again, we have to do it in partnership. So looking ahead, in the 2017 to 2019 period, the staff at the Department of Housing works very closely with our nonprofit partners. We have to read the tea leaves. The numbers will change over time, but we feel we have a good grasp on what's in the pipeline in the next two years. What is falling, what projects will come in to close and need gap funding to actually get built? And what projects might come in needing critical pre-development funding? And what that might total to? Our best estimate is there is about $29.1 million in need in those two categories over the next two years. And a lot of this comes down to juggling and, and stretching. The need is definitely there, but we feel we have a good grasp on what's in the pipeline right now. And I sort of skipped over the units here. We're talking about 600 units for seniors, veterans, and families in the gap funding and about 800 units in the pre-development funding in the next two years. The other way that the, we can provide housing in our community or stabilize affordable housing in our community is through preservation. And your Board provided our Department $10 million in Measure A funding last summer. We went to the request for proposal format, brought in the best ideas available, and we provided, previously provided two projects in the Affordable Housing Fund and then did subsequent projects through the $10 million Measure A. And we've allocated $9.2 million to date. In housing preservation, it's a much different model. You're buying an older, tired building. A nonprofit is coming up with a way to get into the marketplace. They generally have to pay market rate for an old building. And so this is about acquisition and also keeping your eye on what this might cost to bring it back up in line and be sustainable over time. That little over $10 million investment now is yielding about 86 units. And the per-unit cost is about $152,000 in county funds. That's not the actual per-unit cost, but our share as a county funder. So this is where you don't see the leveraging as much. When you think back to the prior slides with the tax credit program, preservation is a much more costly upfront. And then a real concern about the viability of the property for rehabilitation and, and providing sanitary, safe housing into the future. And now I'll bring, have Peggy come back up and talk about the program side of things.
Thank you, Ken. While preservation and new development are the major uses of county funding for affordable housing, there are a number of other programs that your Board has asked staff and our partners to undertake, and I'll spend a few minutes reviewing those. The first one that I'd like to highlight is the Home Sharing Program that's operated by Hip Housing. We gave them $300,000 to do extended outreach and marketing. Some of you may have seen the billboards on Highway 101 that's advertising Hip Housing. Over the past 18 months or so, through that outreach effort, they have created 160 new home shares. And the thing that's quite startling to me is if you think about each of those home shares as creating a new home, that investment on the county's part has been somewhat less than $2,000 per unit to create that new home. The other thing I draw your attention to is the map. The map on this slide indicates where those new home shares are located, and they are located throughout the county. So like the housing developments that have been funded by the Affordable Housing Fund, the Home Sharing Project is assisting people throughout San Mateo County also. Additional ongoing programs, your Board asks us to focus on some tenant assistance programs. We have a contract with Project Sentinel to provide a tenant hotline that has received over 150 calls a month about tenant, a variety of tenant issues. That hotline was established around the first of the year and continues to receive a significant number of calls. We also have provided funding to legal aid and other legal assistance programs in the county, the East Panaloto Community Law Foundation, who together provide workshops for tenants and provide some representation. And then another program that was, we were directed to provide by your Board is operated by our Environmental Health Division. They have, they have created an enhanced apartment inspection program. What they identified was about 10% of the apartment buildings with four or more units in the county received about 95% of the complaints from residents. They hired, with the funding, they hired a dedicated inspector to go out and inspect those buildings. On a more frequent basis, they identified something under 350, about 350 buildings were included in that inspection program, and about 2,000 violations were identified. And most importantly, those, those violations were fixed by the landlords through work with the environmental health staff. So in addition to those programs, over the past 18 months or so, your Board has adopted a number of ordinances related to housing. As you may recall, you adopt residential and commercial impact fees. You adopted a mobile home park conversion moratorium and revised our mobile rent control programs. I'd like to point out that this summer, our Planning and Building Department will be coming back to you with the next steps in both of those two projects. Your Board has also adopted revised, revised our inclusionary zoning requirements and this past January updated our second unit regulations. All of those ordinance require, ordinances require staff time to enforce and implement. And finally, there are, an additional group of programs have also been supported by your Board. The County, County Employee Down Payment Assistance Program held its first drawing the first week of April. We have five county employees who are now pre-qualified for that program. Our Housing Innovation Fund, which was developed and operated by the Department of Housing, is very soon expecting five reports back from the five grantees on a variety of topics related to housing. And we will share all of that with you when we get that information back. Second unit programs, as you all know, second units are also a very important way to increase our housing stock, particularly since over two-thirds of the housing in San Mateo County are single-family units. An amnesty program around second units to improve second units that need repairs to become more healthy and more safe living units will be brought back to your Board this summer by the Planning and Building Department. And we are also developing through our Home For All Program targeted marketing, promotion, and an online center to promote the development of additional second units throughout the county. I mentioned our Home For All Initiative, our outreach and education programs will continue. And finally, we have used a little bit of our Measure A funding to support staff in the Planning and Building Department, in the Housing Department, and the County Managers' Office to oversee and implement all of these programs. So from our analysis of what's been accomplished to date, we, the staff working on housing in the county developed a number of principles around which, which we use to allocate the $30 million that's been set aside for housing in the budget. And the first principle is county leverage. Ken talked about this when he mentioned development. And I just wanna reiterate the fact that 11% of a project of new development, 11% of those costs are contributed by the county. So, a little less than for every dollar that the county contributes, $9 are put in by someone else, whether it's a mortgage bank, whether it's tax credit dollars, or the cities. $1 generates $9 of additional funding. That compares with our preservation program, where on average, the county contributes 36% of the cost. But our projects have ranged in contributions from a low of 20%, where the city of Redwood City put in a significant contribution, to a high of 50%, where the county contributed 50% of the total cost. So instead of $1 for nine, we are getting, we are getting a contribution of $1 for $1 in the most expensive projects that we contributed to. So county leverage is one point. Another is cost effectiveness, which evolves from the county leverage. As Ken mentioned, our contribution per unit for new development is $60,000, where a contribution for acquisition projects has been on a whole, on average, about $152,000. So when you put all those numbers together and your focus is on assisting families, which Ken highlighted, because that's really what we're here to do, is help our families in San Mateo County. Investing in development generates about twice as many units, little more than twice as many units, as investing in new preservation of an existing building. So another important principle that we looked at when we were allocating the funding was to keep the development pipeline moving. As Ken mentioned, a lot of the pipeline has really opened up since the county established the Affordable Housing Fund. And the graph on this bottom chart really illustrates that. Prior to fiscal year 1314, when the Affordable Housing Fund was established by your Board, there were about, little under 130 new units were, and new construction, construction of new units occurred. So 130 new units were under construction each year. That number has more than doubled to 275. If, Ken talked about those projects in that gap, the gap funding. Just funding that $17 million in gap funding will generate an annual start of 275 new units, so a significant increase. I think the point we're trying to make is that the pipeline has been significantly opened by the Board's investment. And then finally, the other principle is we think it's important to keep the programs that have proven results operating and to maintain and implement, obviously, and enforce the ordinance that your Board has adopted. So based upon those principles, staff is recommending your Board consider the following allocations of the $30 million. For the Affordable Housing Fund, we recommend that $22 million of that is dedicated to the development of new housing, affordable housing in San Mateo County. That $22 million will cover the $17 million in gap projects. And as Mr. Cole mentioned, those are projects that we expect to close in the upcoming fiscal year. So this $22 million would close all of those projects. And it would also include about 30% of the pre-development project money that's been, that we anticipate to be requested over the next two years. So $22 million for the Affordable Housing Fund. The next line item, identified as HART or AHF or Affordable Housing Fund, is, is, is an option for your Board to consider. There's been a request for $5 million to create a pilot revolving loan fund program for HART. This revolving loan fund program would pay for pre-development costs for teacher housing and other workforce housing projects. This is something HART has to do. It's not something the county could do, because the occupants of workforce housing make too much money to qualify for the affordable housing projects that the Affordable Housing Fund contributes to. Alternatively, if you chose not to put that money toward a revolving funded HART, you could use that $5 million to pay for about another 45% of the projects in the pre-development pipeline. So if you added the first two lines together, if you got $27 million, you would pay for all the gap projects in the pipeline and 75% of the pre-development projects. Now, the final two line items, the $1.4 million and $1.6 million, are to continue our tenant assistance programs that I mentioned, and also the ongoing programs and staffing to continue the work that the Planning, Building, and the Housing Department are doing. So when you add all of that together, that's our recommendation about the allocation of the $30 million. Now, another point that I'd like to add, as Mr. Cole said, that in the past, the county has used CDBG and home funding to, to contribute to and supplement county, other county resources for the Affordable Housing Fund. We've included, this is a light item, although we know that it's not currently in the President's budget, we hope that there might be some funding included, depending upon what happens in Washington, and would recommend that that money be put toward the Affordable Housing Fund. So when you add all of that together, that's our recommendation about the allocation of the $30 million. Now, another point that I'd like to add, as Mr. Cole said, that in the past, the county has used CDBG and home funding to contribute to and supplement county, other county resources for the Affordable Housing Fund. We've included, this is a light item, although we know that it's not currently in the President's budget, we hope that there might be some funding included, depending upon what happens in Washington, and would recommend that that money be put toward the Affordable Housing Fund. If in fact, the funding at prior levels, that $4 million is received, that would allow you to either fund, do the HART loan and about 75% of the pre-development funding plus the gap funding, or cover everything in the current pipeline and then have a little bit of money left over, about, little less than a million left over for other purposes. So I want to go back just before we, we close to review a slide and add on the funding that's recommended for fiscal 1719 to the slide that Mr. Cole showed about the sources of funding for the Affordable Housing Fund. And the point I'd like to make is if you look at the, the first four columns, which represent the first four years of the Affordable Housing Fund, $10 million in Measure A was included in Affordable Housing Fund. That averages out to about $2.5 million a year from Measure A. If you look at the two columns, the two green columns on the right-hand side, which are Measure A funds, you realize, you see that $11 million a year is being recommended for the Affordable Housing Fund, for a total of $22 million. That's a significant increase in the amount of money the board would be contributing from Measure A slash now Measure K toward affordable housing development. And finally, I'd like to add an additional recommendation. You all heard us talk about the work that's been done about affordable rental housing preservation. At this point, based upon our priorities around leverage, cost effectiveness, and most importantly, helping as many families as possible, we are not recommending additional funding for the Rental Preservation Fund. What we do suggest is that your board directs staff to request more cost effective. And by more cost effective, what I mean is how do we extend the dollars that we have available to help more people, more families in need in San Mateo County? Have us research more cost effective preservations options and report back to your board in October. Some of those options you might ask us consider are increased leverage requirements for any preservation project we contribute to, and also you might ask us to go back to the White Paper that we prepared on tenant perfection options and look at possibly just cause eviction or relocation assistance. That's our recommendation around preservation based upon leverage, cost effectiveness. So Mr. Cole and I are available now for questions, but I'll leave a final slide on the board that alloc, that identifies the allocations that we're recommending. And at this point, we're available to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions from the board? Nope. Nope. Just, I just want to comment, the HART is Housing Endowment Regional Trust, and it was, it is a project that actually brought the board's attention that it does, we have seen a number of school districts are interested in affordable housing, and they do have surplus property, and it's, this is, it is kind of a pilot project of a loan to HART, and it would, if the, if it actually works, it would be revolving fund. If it does not, money would come back to the county, so it's my preference to support that. Mr. Cole, would you add some?
Yeah, I just, our department works very closely with HART. We look forward to continuing the collaboration. I think they have a very special role potentially to play in, in stimulating the teacher housing, and it's been touched on as to why that's not a good fit with AHF, and it's something that maybe they could really, you know, assist the community with, and we look forward to that partnership.
So now, I have sort of a question of my colleagues here. I have a whole bunch of things on, in housing, but many of them indicate Measure K. How about if we talk about Measure K now, the Measure K allocation, and then do the housing, the housing, the Affordable Housing Plan and Measure K allocation at the same time? Does that make sense? Or not?
Not quite sure.
Well, I'm, you know, I, I guess I could take all of these comments now.
Take them.
We'll do that? Okay, we'll take them now. So we'll do, Michael Kane is our, I'm sorry, Michael Lane is our first. Followed by Cesar Gonzalez, who's a famous actor.
Not that I have your attention.
You do.
President Horsey Supervisor is Michael Lane with the nonprofit Housing Association Northern California and a proud Daly City resident. Glad to be here today. I wanted to first express my gratitude for, as you saw, the importance of the Affordable Housing Fund. Back in 2011, when redevelopment agencies were eliminated, it was a very dark time for affordable housing. We were just coming out of the Great Recession, we were facing sequestration at the federal level, and over that time, we've lost almost 80% of all state and federal funding for affordable housing. But our board supervisors here in this county stepped up and committed those boomerang funds for redevelopment, including moving to work funding, as Mr. Cole had mentioned, and really created a model here. And I think over time, we've demonstrated, as you've seen today with the numbers of units that are coming online or in the pipeline, we've demonstrated the proof of concept here. This really works when the county provides a relatively small amount of funding upfront, either pre-development and/or gap financing, then we can really put together the other pieces and draw down whatever state and federal resources we have left. And so it's become absolutely crucial, and it's actually led to the kind of success we're seeing across the county in the ability to move these projects forward. Going forward though, I think, as was mentioned, the horizon for federal funding does not look good, and we do expect a continuing resolution. You've got the Freedom Caucus going to be demanding additional sequestration cuts on the non-defense discretionary side, particularly if, if folks want to ramp up defense spending, as it looks like that, that's probable. We've got the debt ceiling increase coming, there'll be another leverage opportunity to ratchet down that HUD budget almost completely. I really don't expect to see home and CDBG lasting certainly, so it makes the local funding even more important. As you know, we're also seeing roiling in the tax credit markets currently for, for low-income housing tax credits because of the talk of tax reform, and really, corporations will have a less need for that kind of a credit if they're going to have a significant reduction. And so that's, we're already seeing less pricing there and more gaps popping up in terms of our pipeline. So now, more than ever, I think it's really important we make the investments in the Affordable Housing Fund, but I think what's proposed here is about less than half of the need to really move a pipeline, and we've done some work on what that pipeline is with our affordable developers, and we'd like to share that with you to see if we could bump up that number significantly.
Thanks, Michael. Cesar Gonzalez, followed by Tom Leinbarger.
Cesar had to go.
Oh, okay. So Tom, followed by Matt Franklin.
Good morning. Tom Leinbarger, Emerald Hills resident for the last 45 years. What I'm afraid of if we don't have the entire $30 million funding is the county does not look like it's keeping the same commitment they made. What I noticed is with all of, all of the money that's gone into this so far, there's only been 208 units completed. So it's, it's not, this isn't important. And if we discourage those three entities that build this kind of housing by not going in with our full commitment to $30 million, I'm afraid they'll pick another county. All the other counties have more low-income housing per capita than San Mateo County, all of them. So ours is, 2.8% of our housing is affordable. So this, this cutting back could jeopardize all 491 units that can be built with the 30 million, with that, with the multiplier effect, with the 10 to 20 coentities that come in and help support that housing. So I think it's important that we keep the, the $30 million and produce the housing we need. Also, this council said that by 2020, they would have all veterans housed, all homeless veterans. This is important to get this passed so we can do that. Otherwise, it becomes an empty promise, and we also have problems with seniors who need the housing, and a lot of this housing will be dedicated to seniors. So please, go with the $30 million, and I'm not sure where you'll find the rest of the money, but I've, I've never seen such big numbers as I saw earlier today at this council. Thank you so much.
Matt Franklin, followed by Evelyn, Evelyn Stivers.
President Horsey, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity, I appreciate it. I also appreciate the opportunity of worked with you on the Measure K initiative. It was about 10 months ago that we were all here, and that you all voted unanimously to approve putting the extension on the ballot. The discussion that day was in the context of public opinion polling that showed that affordable housing was the number one issue on voters' minds, that had been conducted by the county, as well as overwhelming, discussion on overwhelming housing need. Many of you said when you voted for that, that you were doing so because you wanted to accelerate production of affordable housing, that you wanted to take initiatives to drive deeper impact to get that done. I also had the opportunity to work with you to raise a million dollars for that campaign. We went to some of the leading foundations and businesses in Silicon Valley to individuals. We told them the same, that the opportunity we had was to accelerate production of affordable housing to meet the need. We ran a campaign where the message we sent to voters was that that was the purpose of asking them to vote yes. 70% of the voters voted yes. So today is our opportunity to follow through on all that great work, and I would urge you to do so by funding 30 million a year for production of affordable housing. I, I can assure you that that money will be well spent. There's been a lot of discussion today about the pipeline as though it's kind of a finite number. And we do great work, you have one of the best staffs in the Bay Area, but it is not finite. We were in front of Redwood City the other day, got approval to move forward with 120 units that we have not put on Ken Cole's desk yet, but that will be moving through their process in Redwood City. We're going to be in front of Menlo Park in May for 118 units at 1300 Willow Road. We've bought 1283 Willow Road, which has 27 units, and we're actively entitling it with the city. We're talking to Daly City about funding they have, they want to do more good work. The, the pipeline, if I could just finish, the pipeline is not finite, and I would also just tell you that you're in competition with other counties. So Santa Clara will be spending 100 million a year over the next eight years for affordable housing. Alameda's going to spend 60 to 70 million a year on affordable housing. So groups like MidPen, Bridge, Mercy, we have limited resources, we go quickly where there is money to move deals quickly.
Thanks, Matt.
So if you want to create more units, I think you need to put more money out there to spur production, and if you do that, I guarantee you it'll be put to good use.
Evelyn Stivers, followed by Paul Krupka.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. My name's Evelyn Stivers, I'm with the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County, and I just want to recognize everyone that's here today to support more money for affordable housing. If you could all just stand up, thank you for coming today. I know, you know, we, we had a great night on November in, locally, when Measure K passed by 70% of the vote. Unfortunately, the picture wasn't so bright at the federal level. The new changes at the federal level mean that our dollars do not go as far at the local level. So we need the leadership and the investment of San Mateo County more now than ever. What I'm concerned with, if, if we do not invest enough money to move the projects that are in the pipeline forward, if we slow-walk them, we will go back to the bad days of this county where we would only produce about 100 units every year for the entire county. That is how we became the county with the lowest per capita number of affordable homes. That is how we ended up being the, the center of the displacement crisis in the region. I know we have the leadership and the strength and the, and the ingenuity to make that not be the case, and I know that you are smart enough to come up with the $30 million a year that we need to make sure that our affordable housing gets built. Thank you so much for your leadership and your support.
Thanks, Abby. Paul Krupka, followed by Chelsea Bonini.
Good morning, President Sloke, Horsey, and the board. Paul Krupka, thank you very much again for your dedication and stewardess, stewardship, stewardship of the Measure K program. I understand, we all see it, there are many demands for Measure K money. I believe that affordable housing should be the highest priority, and urge you to consider doubling the Measure K allocation to 30 million per year. I have a question, can we reallocate the $10 million of Measure K money for IT to affordable housing? Thank you.
Chelsea, Chelsea, Chelsea Bonini, followed by Nancy Shea.
Good morning, Honorable Board of Supervisors and County Manager Malpe and Mr. Sacco and Mr. Byers. My name is Chelsea Bonini, I'm the current president of the San Mateo Foster City School Board. I'm here today to advocate for the use of at least $30 million annually to Measure K funds for affordable housing through the Affordable Housing Fund, and specifically the revolving pilot loan fund through HART for workforce housing. The campaign for Measure K indicated that it would result in a major new investment in affordable homes for renters and homeowners. While I realize that there are many other needs and services that Measure K will fund to improve the quality of life in San Mateo, an improved quality of life insinuates that our community members actually live in our county. In my role, I know very well that our teachers, and therefore our students, will benefit from more affordable housing. As a board, we have been exploring how we can help on this front for our teachers and school staff. I would welcome further conversation with you to see if there is a way we can work together on this important topic. It breaks my heart to hear at most of our board meetings that many of our teachers and staff cannot afford to live in our community, and they are leaving at an ever-increasing rate to move to other states and regions, and that although I sincerely wish that we will be able to increase salaries over time, this will never be enough to combat the current and devastating housing crisis. I urge you to remain consistent with your campaign message for Measure K, and please place additional funds to accelerate affordable and workforce homes in our communities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Nancy Shea, followed by Fiona Sue.
Good morning, Honorable Board of Supervisors and County Manager Malpe and Mr. Sacco and Mr. Byers. My name is Nancy Conche, and I serve along with President Bonini on the San Mateo Foster City School Board. I want to thank you, all of you, for your commitment to the improvement of the lives of those of us living in San Mateo County in multiple ways, through the dedication of Measure K funds to public safety, health, well-being, the youth, elderly, veterans, parks in the environment, and last but not least, education. I too am here to respectfully ask for your consideration of increasing the allocation to $30 million annually for Measure K funds for the creation of more affordable housing units. To add to the picture that President Bonini painted for you as to what we are seeing in our school district, over the last couple of school years, while we have had overall enrollment increase, we have been seeing a notable drop of the numbers of our low-income student population, decreasing from approximately 30% to around 25% of our total student body. And I expect this percentage will continue to drop. Many families are simply no longer able to keep up with the rising housing costs, and they're losing the area, and this loss of students and their families signifies the changing demographics of our county. We are rapidly becoming truly unaffordable for a wide sector of people, and I value living in an area where we have people from all walks of lives with diverse backgrounds and employed in a broad category of jobs. I think that one of the messages the voters sent by the passage of Measure K was that they support affordable, additional affordable new housing units. A budget is a statement of our values, and I feel very hopeful, based on your record of funding decisions and frankly, comments made today by you and the board, that you also value such an inclusive community and will work to create the conditions that are necessary to sustain it. Thank you.
Thank you. Fiona Sue, followed by Amy Bailey.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Fiona Sue, I was raised in Burlingame, and now I'm raising my family in San Mateo. I serve on the Board of the Housing Leadership Council, and I lead the Community Development Finance Group at Silicon Valley Bank. We're currently working with MidPen Housing on financing University Avenue senior apartments in East Palo Alto, as well as Civic Cities Center Plaza in Redwood City. Both of those projects are nearing completion and will be, will make a positive impact on their surrounding communities and their neighborhoods. So as a new San Mateo mom, a little bit more distressed after hearing, honestly, after hearing President Bonini's comments, but also as an affordable housing finance professional, I urge you to, to consider increasing the allocation of Measure K funding for affordable housing. The affordable housing crisis that we currently face will only worsen if we don't take immediate action to increase the supply of housing for our workers as well as our most vulnerable populations. This immediate proactive action will preserve this wonderful, truly wonderful quality of life in San Mateo County and reflect the values of this compassionate community. Thank you for your leadership and your, and your consideration.
Thanks for your comments. Amy Bailey, followed by Nathan Ho.
Good morning.
Morning.
Members of the board. My name is Sister Amy Bailey, I'm with Mercy Housing for many years. Mercy Housing has worked here in San Mateo County in a limited way, and I would just say that it is reinforced because of the availability of resources, not because of the need, or the desire, or the connections, or the opportunities, but mainly because, as Matt mentioned, the financial opportunities. And so we have X amount of places that we can go, and where there is financial opportunity, we want to kind of go in and use our resources. The good news is, one of the many things that the pipeline is going to be already committed to is our 66 units of, of veterans supportive housing in Colma, the city they like to describe themselves as themselves as 1,500 souls above ground. And it has been very much embraced by that community and the historic society. That in the next four months is going to use 1 to 3 million of this money that's being allocated, and then it's gone, which means pipeline is down the line. It's not the next two years. So I don't need to repeat.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nathan Ho, Brent Turner? No. He must, I think he was already up here a couple times.
Mr. President, members of the board, let me start by thanking you for your leadership to build and preserve affordable housing here in the county. I'm Nathan Ho with Eden Housing, one of the oldest nonprofit affordable housing developers, managers, and owners here in the state. We work in 15 counties across the state, including here in San Mateo County. As you know, the affordable housing need for our low-income neighbors is great, and by all accounts is growing. Eden has been overwhelmed, excuse me, with more than 20,000 households on our waitlist across the state. Within the board for your leadership in putting Measure K on the ballot, you remember that the board considered a housing bond for the ballot to begin addressing the affordable housing need here in the county, but ultimately decided that the sales tax extension was the way to go to increase housing funding. I was personally encouraged by the board's discussion nearly a year ago around finding a tool to increase county housing funding. I joined others in the chamber today to ask that the board allocate at least 30 million a year. That's 16 million over two years, FY '17, '18, '19. We ask that this investment is made now to attract new and effective opportunities going forward. Nonprofit affordable housing developers like Eden are ready and have been exploring opportunities in the county based off the board's commitment to increase county affordable housing funding. Eden is undergoing a complete capital needs renovation of our Light Tree Apartments in East Palo Alto. That's 94 affordable rental apartments, home to 240 low-income San Mateo County residents. At this time, no gap financing is needed, but there's the opportunity because Light Tree is apparently made up of low-rise buildings on a large site, and Eden is in the early stage of exploring the possibility of replacing some of the structures with a new four-story building to allow for additional 50 to 50 affordable housing units, depending on local approvals and availability of gap financing. Eden is also looking at preserving affordable rental apartments in this county. There is a building here in Redwood City that has 24 deed-restricted units that will expire in October, and Eden is looking at acquiring that building that would preserve those 24 units, as well as convert 62 of those market rate units to affordable units.
Thank you. Daniel Saber, followed by Nevada Mayorman.
Good morning, members of the board and staff. My name is Daniel Saber. I'm an attorney at Community Legal Services in East Palo Alto, and I'm here to add my voice to the chorus of the public, asking for the board to dedicate $30 million per year to affordable housing funding. I'd like to start by picking up on what Mr. Cole said, that this county does not operate in isolation, that this housing crisis is really a regional problem, but one that has various local manifestations. And I want to talk a little bit about what some other folks are doing to try and address this crisis. At a regional level, we know that numerous other counties surrounding us, from San Francisco, Alameda, and Santa Clara, have all invested heavily in affordable housing, passing bonds upwards of roughly $2 billion for affordable housing. And locally, many people who are in this room have been working very hard to bring new resources to bear. Just one example is a community coalition of nonprofit groups in East Palo Alto who brought Facebook to the table to put roughly $20 million into affordable housing in a one-time, one-time payment. So I know that the county has been doing lots of work on this issue. I've had the pleasure of serving on the Jobs Housing Task Force with several of you. I'm also now on the Steering Committee for the Homes For All campaign, as well as the Legislative Committee. I've been to lots of meetings, I've had the opportunity to spend lots of time with President Horsey and Supervisor Slokum. In this county, we have had a lot of great conversation about housing, the housing and displacement crisis. We've had a lot of dialogue across a cross-section of stakeholders, and lots of talk over bagels and coffee very early in the morning, as you know. But now is a time to, as they say, put our money where our mouth is. This is about more than talk, more than conversation and dialogue. This is a time for bold action. This proposal is keeping the funding, the total amount of funding, at a stable level over the years. I appreciate the county is putting more of your money in, and just to wrap up, I know that you're putting more as a proportion of your money into that pot, but what we're looking at is stable, flat funding. We need to see an infusion of new funding to really tackle this crisis with the urgency it merits. Thank you.
Thanks, Daniel. Nevada Mayorman, followed by Jessica DeWitt.
Good morning. Thank you, members of the board and staff. I'm Nevada Mayorman, Director of Development for MidPen Housing and Memo Park resident, wanting to pick up on what Mr. Saber just mentioned, which is that in looking at the numbers from 2016 to 2017, it really appears to be flat funding, not a significant jump in the investment in housing. And although, as a user of many of these programs, and it has been a real pleasure to work in most of your districts, personally, as a project manager, working to bring new units, this looks like about the same as what we've seen in the past, not something that would really help us grow the pipeline, something that would help us keep it at a, just push it forward, really. So a second point I'd like to make is actually, I received a letter from one of our residents in the Delaware Pacific community that is in San Mateo. She is, she also is an employee of the county, she works for the Housing Authority. So I'll just read as much as I can during the time I have left. "Good morning. My name is Leslie Munoz. I was raised in San Mateo my whole life. It's where I call home. I feel compelled to share my story with you in hopes that you see how decisions made today impact the entire community. I grew up with two sisters and a hard-working, single mom. Life was tough. We were not always poor. At one point, when my father was in the picture, we were doing okay. Once he left and my mom lost her job, we were homeless, living in empty offices that friends would let us stay in for a year. Yes, poverty here in San Mateo County, about four miles away from today's meeting. In 2013, our lives changed forever. My family was blessed to be picked number six in the lottery for a three-bedroom apartment. We were chosen from over 2,000 applicants. Before that, we were living in a rundown, moldy, tiny one-bedroom, but that was what we called home because it was all my mom could afford at the time. I was limited as to how much money I could bring home because my focus was always on school. Getting on less than, getting by on less than $25,000 a year makes lives very difficult for a family of five. What Delaware Pacific meant to us was freedom, a sense of relief and hope. I know so many families feel the same way, having to choose between rent or food." And just to kind of get to the end of her story here, that fast-forward four years later, I am now working for the Housing Authority, finishing my thesis, graduating from a master's in public administration, and both of my sisters are transferring to a four-year college in this upcoming August. I moved out of my mom's house two years ago, but my family will continue to call Delaware Pacific home, and I thank you for that because your votes years ago has made that possible. Please, I urge you to think about your decisions today and realize it will have a lifetime impact on families who need your support. Thank you very much.
Jessica DeWitt, followed by Kristen Taylor.
Wow, that's a hard story to follow.
Yeah.
I'm Jessica DeWitt. I'm from Palo Alto Housing. We're a nonprofit affordable housing developer with over 700 units on the peninsula that we own and manage. We are excited to be proposing our first project here in unincorporated San Mateo County in the North Fair Oaks neighborhood. And we're proposing about 60 affordable housing rental units, with about 30 going towards military veterans. We're requesting 5 million in loans from the county, and we're looking to match that amount with other soft lending sources. And to do that, it's critical that we have the county funds coming in first, so that we can score competitively for those applications that we're going for, for the other soft lending sources. So we really appreciate your support in making sure that this housing is built. Please allocate 30 million per year. Thanks.
Ally Gaylord, final speaker.
Hello. Good morning. My name is Kristen Taylor, and I work for EAH Housing, which is a nonprofit developer and real estate management company. And I'm here to talk about the people that would be serving by allocating the $30 million for the Measure K. We actually manage Willow Housing in Menlo Park, which is currently housing formerly homeless veterans and those who would be in imminent danger of becoming homeless. We are ready and willing to continue to commit our resources to this funding, and we really hope that the children, families, senior citizens of San Mateo County who are on our waitlist will be able to take advantage of new opportunities so that they can mobilize from just surviving out in San Mateo to thriving within this county that they're choosing to call their home. Thank you.
Thanks. Ally, go ahead.
Good morning. I'm Ally Gaylord from Bridge Housing Corporation. I'm here to support the supervisors allocating $30 million or more of the Measure K funding to affordable housing. Currently, Bridge Housing is working on a new development in San Mateo. It's the affordable component of the Bay Meadows development, and we are proposing 68 units of 100% affordable housing. The development has received support from the city. They're offering the land at a $1 a year ground lease for 99 years, as well as $2 million in capital funding. We also plan to apply for 9% tax credits, which is a large portion of equity that we can leverage the county funds with, and that would be an application in the spring of 2018, and we would look to begin construction in the end of the year in 2018. So the county funds are an incredibly important part of our financing stack. As was previously mentioned, we have leveraging point-scoring system so that we become competitive for those 9%, those 9% tax credits. So if the county can allocate enough funding per year, you can get much more housing built and use your funding more wisely to leverage and create more units. So I encourage you to allocate a substantial portion of the Measure K funds to housing. The Bay Area Council poll that was released a couple of weeks ago also mentioned that 76% of respondents think that housing costs are threatening the Bay Area economy, and that 78% know someone who are forced out of the Bay Area in the last two years due to high housing costs. Building permanently affordable housing using the voter-approved Measure K dollars will alleviate this issue and will allow San Mateo residents to remain in their community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Do we, there's also on the Measure K allocation plan.
I think you should go ahead and hear the Measure K allocation plan. You know, the, obviously, you're talking about a pot of money that hasn't grown, it's Measure K, it's the same amount, and the board, you know, has very difficult choices to make between all important programs and projects, remembering that in Measure A, which runs through 2022, the board made a number of commitments to the community which were honored in Measure A, that if you wanted to transfer those monies for different projects, you would, in essence, be not honoring the promises that had been previously made.
So, Raina?
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Sacco, Mr. Malby, Mr. Byers. Jim and I are here to present the Measure K allocation plan. You can get the slides on the screen there. And I would refer the board to attachments one and two, that has a summary of the carryover projects, as well as the continuing Measure K projects and initiatives. So just a summary of the revenues that we've received from the Measure K half-cent sales tax. It was approved back in November 2012. We started to receive it in April of 2013. So the last four fiscal years, so through this fiscal year, we've received about $320 million in Measure K dollars. And as we look ahead, as you can see, the last three years have been relatively flat, primarily from jet fuel sales tax, gas taxes not being as high coming in. And then, as you look ahead, we're assuming a 2% growth in Measure K dollars. So for our assumptions in the next two years, we'll be using $81 million a year in Measure K annual dollars. So spending on Measure K, starting in fiscal year 2014 through 2016, so the last three years, we spent $104 million. So these are the expenditures that have gone to the Oversight Committee for audit and review, and commitments from these years have continued on, for the most part, into the next two years, and we'll go through those slides. For the current year, for 2016, '17, we're estimating spending $87 million in Measure K funds, and then a lot of that, the difference between what we've received and what we're going to spend and has been allocated will be carried over into the next two years. So that bottom bar is a carryover amount of projects that have already been committed, have been funded and approved by the board, and that will continue and finish over the next few years. And we are projecting at the end of this fiscal year that we'll have reserves in the neighborhood of $8 million, which is, which meets our policy of 10% reserve. So over the next few slides, I'll go over the three components of the Measure K allocation plan. So the first is the carryover projects from the last fiscal year that are being moved forward, and then ongoing Measure K initiatives, this is the $42 million a year that we're already committed to fund, and then the allocation plan for the next two years. So all of it put together, including a number of the initiatives that have already been presented to the board with the capital and IT and affordable housing. So on carryover projects, this is the estimate of $121 million. This is how we've distributed the Measure K funds over the last, essentially, two to three years. These projects are in play and will be completed under public safety. Some of those projects are the Public Safety Regional Operations Center, about $30 million still there, and then a number of fire station replacements, like Skylonda and Pescadero are in that number. And then, just going down the list, some of the other projects there are referring to attachment one, some of the significant ones. Under youth and education, we have the Big Lift. Under that $19 million figure, we have about $13 million of Big Lift to be carried over. We have a number of transitional housing projects for foster youth in that number, and many homeless initiatives as well. And then in that $27 million figure at the bottom, that includes a number of capital projects that have been summarized by Public Works earlier in the last presentation last week, as well as SAM Trans. We've got some carryover for SAM Trans, and as well as technology projects in that $27 So for ongoing Measure K, this is the $42 million that will be continued in the next two years. Under public safety, this is attachment two in your report. We have the fire engine replacement funds, so continuing on with that replacement schedule, it's about $1.5 million. Under health and mental health, we have the operation of the Respite Center, as well as the home visit expansion. Those are the largest initiatives there. Under youth and education, continuing on with the Big Lift, we have the Family Resource Centers under the Human Services Agencies. A significant portion of that is the expansion of mental health services in the schools. So those are continuing, as well as library summer programs and a number of foster youth support programs. And then for housing and homelessness, there is the Hope Plan implementation, that's $2.2 million there, and many rapid rehousing initiatives that will continue, as well as our homeless outreach teams and shared housing. Under parks and environment, that is ongoing maintenance of parks. Under older adults and veterans, we have the District Attorney and the Elder and Dependent Adult Protection Team is funded under older adults and veterans. We have a number of dementia and ombudsman services for our elder clients. And lastly, under community infrastructure and services, the $11 million, we have $5 million for SAM Trans, for paratransit services. We have our network and our upgrade projects under IT and a number of other community services. So that's the ongoing $42 million. This is difficult to see from the audience. So to recap, for the next two years, and keeping in mind, as you look at this for each fiscal year, if we continue these, it's really times 25, right? We have 25 We have twenty-five years left in Measure K dollars. So starting out with the carryover projects at a hundred and twenty-one million, and then, once you add the continuing initiatives, that's the bulk of what we're putting in the allocation plan. Some of the new initiatives and what we're recommending to set aside over the next two years include what Ms. Jensen and Mr. Cole went over earlier, the thirty million dollars in affordable housing initiatives. We have North County Health Care. This is a Satan contract that we'll finish out in 2019. The county match for the Whole Person Care Pilot, which could continue past 2019, but this is the county match. The next one, the eight million dollars, so we are recommending, given the uncertainty at the state and federal level, setting aside five million dollars in Measure K funds until we know more about what those impacts are. And then, there's also three million dollars a year that we're setting aside until we have a plan for designating a portion of Measure K that is related to airport operations. So the sales tax generated at the airport needs to be spent on airport operations. And then, board district-specific funds, we're recommending the same level as the last two-year cycle, which is three-and-a-half million dollars a year. So each board district would have one-point-four million dollars over the next two years. And then, for parks, Ms. Berkland went over the new capital projects, and we're recommending the three million dollars a year for those projects. And then, lastly, back in December, we requested your board to approve this community asset-mapping project that takes a look at our youth clients across HSA, Human Services Agency, and probation at the census-track level, and taking a look at how we can better serve the high-risk youth in those areas. And then, finally, ten percent policy minimum. We want to continue to keep that in place. So for the next fiscal year, we're looking at two-hundred-and-ten million dollars of Measure K dollars to allocate, and then, looking ahead, eighty-nine million dollars. That's with the reserves. So here's a quick pie chart of what that all means as far as distribution. So under housing and homelessness, that's the largest slice of the pie. We have sixty-seven million dollars going into the next two years. So this includes all the carryover and ongoing and new initiatives. And that's followed by our community services, including capital and IT and youth education. And as we go on there, we have, lastly, the reserves at eight million dollars. So when the fiscal year ends, and we have final fund balances figured out and the books are closed, what we are recommending, if there are fund balances in excess of the reserves policy, that we take a look at that in September. We can revisit some of the things that have been brought to your board, either today or from the last meeting. We want to maintain our reserves policy at ten percent, but then, take a look at funding other priority projects, initiatives, if there is any excess. These are the number of the projects that have been brought up, either the study sessions or in previous board meetings. The mental health daily unit, as well as transitional facility for mental health clients is a high-priority project. The replacement of the property tax system, and then, this is the larger public safety radio system replacement. That's the infrastructure for our radio system, as well as some stormwater projects. This is just a short list. But we would bring back these recommendations to your board in September, once we know more about what our fund balances are. So that concludes our Measure K allocation plan presentation. We'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions of the board?
Question for Raina on the jet fuel reserve. So as I understand that, our Measure K, when we applied the sales tax to jet fuel, raises an incredible, like, four-and-a-half million dollars. I mean, it's a lot of jet fuel. And we spend a million and a half of that for airport needs, and the FAA thinks we should spend the whole four-and-a-half million for airport needs.
That is, it's an FAA ruling. So we need to be able to show a plan that says that that money is going towards airport operations. It could be any airport in the county, but it has to go towards airport operations.
And in the prior four years, when we had taxes generated from the jet fuel, how did we deal with that issue? Is this a new requirement?
It's a new... It's actually an old ruling that's being enforced. And we were notified about two years ago by the airport that the FAA sent a notice to all the airports in the country that they were going to begin to enforce that ruling, which actually applies specifically to Measure AK because of the date in which it passed. Prior sales tax that was implemented before that date doesn't fall under that ruling, but Measure A and K specifically does.
Without getting into details now, I understand you have a lot of creative ideas as to how we might solve for this.
Well, you know, yeah. I mean, we're not alone. It obviously affects all counties and cities that have situations in which there are airports within their jurisdiction. We've certainly had conversations with the federal FAA. Lawsuits a possibility, and I think Mr. Byers can comment on that more at an appropriate time.
Or how we structure our SAM Trans relationship.
SAM Trans relationship might be possible. We spend five million dollars a year that we make from Measure AK contributions towards SAM Trans. SAM Trans, in turn, has an obligation to BART to help fund BART to the airport, the airport being the key connection there. So if we move the five million that we fund SAM Trans to offset their cost for BART to the airport, it may be possible then not to lose that...
That's probably enough for now. My hope is, is that we can find a way to free that three million up. That's an uncertainty.
Okay, so other comments?
I just have a question. Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to ask you in regards to reserves. You talked about 2017 through 2019 having, you know, the ten percent. Previous to that, is there a reserve that we have, which was Measure A, then evolved into Measure K? And then, what is the size of the reserve?
So we essentially allocate the funds every year. And in the event that there are some things that are finished, unless it costs less and/or there are salary savings, those reserves have accumulated over time. And we've managed to keep it around a ten percent reserves, like eight to twelve million dollars from the start of Measure K.
And what is it currently, right now?
Well, we're projecting it to be eight million at the end of this year.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, so we have three open items: information technology, the Affordable Housing Plan, and Measure K allocation. Do you... Comments? Thoughts? Supervisor Groom?
I was going to make one... I was going to ask a question and maybe make one, and have it turn into a suggestion. The five million that we're expecting from the Federals, or think we might get from the federal government, what if we just put that into the Measure K housing allocation and just put it in from our own money? And then, should we get the community block grant money, then we would be able to pay ourselves back?
I think that was four million from Community Development?
Yeah. I think it was five.
I think it was four.
Okay.
It was four.
Okay.
If, in fact, that money wasn't available, then, the board would have to... And that was two million a year, four million. Then, the board would have to reach into its own reserves to make up the difference. And then, that might get into your own reserve policy for the county-wide ten percent, or reduce some other county service for that ten percent.
What I was thinking, Mr. Malpe, was more of putting it at the tail end of our expenditures. And by the end of the year, we would perhaps know if it were going to get it from the feds, and then revisit it.
And that's certainly possible. Probably, the best thing to do, which makes it somewhat less complicated, is really, as Ms. Fralas said, once the books are closed and you do your final budget in September, we know exactly where we stand. We'll know pretty much where we stand with that money. And then, you can make some decisions. If there's more reserves than we anticipated, then obviously, you have the ability to appropriate those. But you really don't know that until we actually close the books and see where we stand.
That's very true. I like that. I just want to keep it on the paper.
Well, let me make one just a...
Yeah, keep the paper... Keep the four million on our pieces of paper. And in September, if the feds have not sent it our way, or we decide that we can't, then we take it away. But kind of count on it until...
I see.
As a last resort.
Can I go back to the SAM Trans? One of the things we did is, as I... I think we've given them about thirty million so far for paratransit.
Five a year. Five a year.
Is it twenty million? Well, it would be thirty if we did it another two years. Okay. But if we could shift that to the airport fuel tax, would that not be one way to take that money?
If we can, we're still talking to county council and SAM Trans. I mean, you know, there are many different players that are involved in these decisions. And if that's possible, then that would be a way to save the three million dollars that have been set aside. Absolutely, yes. But we, you know, we really don't have an answer to that question until we get a final sign-off from the FAA, whether we think that's acceptable or not, because it's their rule that we're complying with here.
So I assume that the plan, if we were able to do it, the plan is that the SAM Trans owes something like a couple, twenty million a year in debt payment for that extension into the airport. That's what we would be aiming that money to.
Well, it would be a portion of that money that would offset their, otherwise, their costs for BART to the airport.
So could we then tentatively say that, until such time as we know, that we could take that five million and put that into affordable housing?
Well, again, I think we have to work with SAM Trans, because they have different pots of money that they've allocated for different things, and how that plays into their financing, too. So it's... That's why I say there's really four different agencies that are involved in that decision: the county, SAM Trans, the airport, and the FAA. And we all have to be on the same page. And we've been talking about it, but we don't have a recommendation yet to make to the board, because there's no definitive word from the FAA or SAM Trans.
Will we have any idea in September, or maybe?
We'll certainly try. I can't speak for other agencies, though. We'll do our part.
The other thing that members were talking about, IT?
I think you're on the point on the SAM Trans.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a comment on the SAM Trans money. I was the one that made that recommendation for budget, but it was actually for paratransit services. And I would hate to see us today say that we don't want to give the five million back for paratransit, because we have a huge growing number of people who are now using paratransit. And it grows every year due to our aging population, but also, there is a rigorous testing to be eligible for paratransit. So it's just not because you're older, it's because you have sight issues, it's because you have wheelchair issues. And so, and the service has grown more and more expensive. As you know, paratransit's an unfunded mandate from the federal government. No federal government money has ever come to help with that. And many, many of the people that use paratransit are our clients. You know, they need to get to our county clinics, and they need to get to our county facilities for their services. And the five million a year certainly doesn't solve the paratransit crisis problem, but it helps. And I would just hate to see us, again, take funds away from a vulnerable population. And I know we have tough choices to make. Don't misunderstand.
Right. I'm not suggesting that, I'm just suggesting that, could we conceivably use that, if we were able to shift that sales tax into that?
Through the President and Supervisor Groom, and I've talked about this, all money is potentially fungible. So that means that the five million that goes to SAM Trans is essentially used for their general fund, that they've used then to offset general funds from SAM Trans that go into paratransit. If, in fact, they could put that money into debt service, and therefore, use the debt service money to replace the paratransit money, it would work. But those are transit decisions, and I've got to work with them to make sure that it works for them. But that's conceivable. It's possible to do, but we just have to get a sign-off from them.
Okay. You also had some... You were going to make some comments about our IT budget?
The only thing I was going to say is, the board will remember that there are four different parts of money, the largest being departmental funding, which is money that's already committed in departments. Second-largest, or next-largest, third-largest, maybe, is 172 funds, which are restricted, public safety, which then gets down to non-departmental and Measure K. Non-departmental, most of that money is being allocated toward the property tax system, which you already heard about. And then, you get to the Measure K. If we begin, and certainly, we would have to, you know, come back and bring a report to the board if the board wants to reduce or eliminate the ten million for Measure K. But if we don't have the ability to build the network of the system for these programs that are being added, then the programs aren't going to do any good. You'd be wasting money. So it is part of a system that each piece is necessary, and you just can't take one part of it away and say, well, the rest of it will work. It all has to work together.
Okay, so does anybody have any great ideas for coming up with this?
I have a great idea.
Supervisor Salko?
And thank you, Mr. President. I may be oversimplifying. Far be it for me, Dr. Fahey said earlier today, quote, "quality of life equally that's available to all." And I think that relates to this affordable housing question as well. And so, a suggestion for my colleagues to consider is, I personally am in favor of adjusting the amount for affordable housing upward. But what that number should be, I'm not sure. And I certainly don't want to cut things that we're going to shoot ourselves in the foot. So perhaps, there's some staff work that could be done, or perhaps, an informal ad hoc committee to look at this IT business and everything else, and then come back with a recommendation on what that number might be, and let us debate that.
So that's...
That's a good idea.
Okay. I do think, though, that we should provide staff with a target. And then, when they come back with the budget, they can show us what will have to be reduced to, if we want to hit our target. I guess we could have a couple of targets. I personally would like to see the housing go up to twenty-five total, and increase to ten. And that's going to be a lot harder than increasing it by just five. So, you know, staff could show us both models. Obviously, ten would require more difficult choices. But when I kind of look at where that money might come from myself, we need to have our reserve numbers solid. And I think those are... They'll be more solid as we get into the final budget season. We're reserving sixteen million in the Measure K, ten million for federal and state uncertainty, and six million for the jet fuel uncertainty. So, Mr. Malpe, for example, putting the jet fuel aside, which, again, I'm hopeful that maybe that gets freed up, but going to the other half, or not the half, the ten-million section, we all know there's a tremendous uncertainty with Fed and state. But don't we have, like, ERAF funds that could serve that purpose? I know that we, you know, we get eighty million dollars of ERAF, and we only, I think we only allocate forty million of them.
Well, forty million is already allocated to the base of the general fund. So if you take any of that, you'd have to reduce the general fund programs. The other forty million, basically, per board policy, goes in significant part to help underwrite the payments to the retirement system.
Not all of that.
Not all of it, but a significant portion. And the balance then would go toward capital projects.
Anyway, it's, again, it can't be solved for right at this moment, but I think the board's all aware that, you know, we always have a fresh forty million of unallocated ERAF. It's always a little bit complicated to understand how we deal with it. On IT, again, I think it would be interesting to ask Mr. Walton to, you know, challenge him to prioritize the projects and say, if you had to cut five million, what would it be? Again, I don't think we're prepared to say, cut five million right now, but it'd be interesting to see. And then, frankly, on the forty-two-million ongoing Measure K, you know, query if we wanted to cut five percent from that, which only would be two million, I'd be interested to see what that might look like. Like, I mean, I'll give you an example. Like, for example, we give money to the District Attorney for elder abuse prosecution, which is a great thing. But on the other hand, because of Prop 47, you know, the caseload has gone down there a lot. So, you know, maybe... So, you know, maybe there's a little room there. So, I mean, you could go back and push on these a little bit. So, you know, overall, I think we've proven for the board to give a target and have staff come back to see how they would solve for it. And, you know, maybe, I would certainly challenge them to find $10 million extra for housing.
That would be 5 million a year?
Yes.
I think that's an interesting option, and maybe, you know, and we could pursue that.
So in some ways, it would postpone certainty for the housing community because we would not be promising that right now. We'd be saying that we want the staff to try to get there.
Just thinking about this. So we are going to end up basically with three open items, which is the information technology plan, the affordable housing plan, and Measure K allocation. Supervisor Slocum and I were both on a subcommittee for Measure K. And I'm going to suggest that we continue working with the county manager and looking at increasing the allocation by 10 million by looking at prioritizing ISD, potentially challenging them to come up with additional 5 million, and looking for some ways or tightening belt or whatever to come up with the additional 5 million.
Per year.
Per year. So I'm going to make that as a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Maybe just a clarification.
Yeah, go ahead.
I think we might just say, I don't know if we're ready to commit to lowering IT by 5 million each year.
Well, I understand that, but we're going to challenge them.
You're going to push it.
We're going to challenge them to see if we can come up with 5 million that won't really eliminate programs or good... Well, we'll see if they have the ability to do that.
And again, I would ask the subcommittee to, it's probably unlikely. I mean, hopefully, it can be solved for without other cuts, but I'm betting that's unlikely. And they ought to itemize, you know, basically, if we're going to put a priority on housing, then maybe some other things have to be cut, you know. So you'll need to bring back, you'll need to bring back some proposed cuts.
I think that's a good suggestion, and we will come back with some proposed cuts. Working with the county manager's office.
Mr. President, would we be allowed, under Brown Act or whatever, to maybe some of us, if we felt like it, going through the budget and offering the ad hoc committee suggestions?
I might suggest instead that the non, I guess, Measure K committee members meet with staff and just provide information.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Staff is, on the Brown Act, staff is encouraged to actually talk to all board members just to get information.
Good. Supervisor Slocum? Just a quick question, Mr. President. Did you volunteer me for a committee?
Yes.
Did that get by me?
I did. I serve at your pleasure.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I just have one other comment I'd like to make on the housing. So I found it really sobering that the purchasing and rehabilitating units is so incredibly expensive, you know.
Yeah.
The fact that we've spent up to 152,000 on average to replace a unit, we can't do that anymore. And so, you know, when you look at the 62K, that feels a lot more comfortable. So, you know, I would just say that if... But what happens is things come up in an emergency, and there's a lot of pressure to do deals. But I really think, you know, I'll be, for every election, to vote for anything that is more than $75,000 a unit. You know, the 62 is a lot. 152 is just very sobering, and I didn't appreciate how expensive that was.
That's true. The other thing, you know, I know the board's aware of this, but I think it doesn't hurt to be reminded. And I know many members of the audience are aware of it, too. Getting affordable housing projects approved in cities is an incredibly difficult thing. I know. I've been to several city council meetings in which they've either been turned down or been greatly reduced in scale. And I've got to say that when I look at the audience, it's mostly people opposed. With a few exceptions of the people in the audience today, there's not a lot of people in the audience supporting those projects. And if you could budget all the money in the world that you want for affordable housing projects, but basically, if they're not approved in the cities, they're not going to get built.
Yeah, I had a kind of a related point. You know, I guess this is to our nonprofit builders. I think that, you know, nonprofit, the work that you do is incredibly important. You create housing. So we're creating about 140 units a year now. So let's say we doubled that. It's still a really modest number of units, any way you look at it. So if we did 300 a year for 10 years, we'd have 3,000 more units. And the people who came into this room would be every bit as upset about the lack of affordable housing as they are now. Now, that's not to say we shouldn't do it because those 3,000 people, that's 3,000 units, maybe that's 6,000, 7,000 people who have a foothold in the county, and that's important. But it's hard to really move the needle on the macro level. So one thing that I think that as we work on housing in the years to come, which will be many years to come, that we really challenge ourselves to be creative, to find solutions beyond just building houses. And the two that come to mind are the hip housing. I mean, look at the bang for the buck we've gotten there. And, I mean, I think I mentioned to the staff, it's like, can they do more? Because they've created almost as many units for a couple hundred thousand dollars as we're suggesting creating for tens of millions. So, for example, if we gave hip housing, and this may be for the next two-year budget, but the point I'm making is, building is, you know, you only get one unit for a whole bunch of money. So like with hip housing, for example, say we gave people really big move-in incentives. I think we give people like 200 bucks now. Say that was 1,000 bucks, you know, how many units could they create? And then another one is accessory dwelling units, which we've addressed and I've spoken to many times. In other parts of the country, Seattle, for example, they have aggressively pushed that. And I think that is by far the quickest and best way to get more units built. You know, neighbors have to tolerate parking trouble. But, you know, I like some of the ideas that the Home for All is pursuing in terms of creating schematics. I'm really happy about this state legislation. So, for example, if we could invest money there, I don't know exactly how it would be utilized, to really jumpstart that, you know, that creates a lot more units, a lot more quickly, than the traditional nonprofit affordable building unit. So, you know, in sum, the work of the nonprofit developers is critical. It should continue. But I just think we all have to challenge ourselves to look for other solutions because it's inherently limited how many units we can build.
Supervisor Canova?
I just want to say, I'm happy in the direction we're moving. I think predevelopment is vitally important. And I can only speak to it as, you know, being on the city council in Daly City, taking a blighted community on Mission Street. I know Mr. Franklin has a project called Sweeney Ridge. I know we're working on some senior housing. I think there was a speaker who talked about being bold, being bold. And I think what you're proposing, and someone had mentioned, budget is about priorities. And so I think what we know is that we're in a housing crisis. And what we've done today, or what we're looking to do today, is going to be transformative in people's lives. And I can only speak to what I know in the city of Daly City. I know there are many people, when I was on the city council, who can't afford to live there. But when they get those keys, and I think a lady had mentioned it, when they get those keys to their apartments, whether it's through Habitat for Humanity, you're changing lives, and you're giving people a ray of hope. And if there's wraparound services that go with that, it's pretty profound. So I think what we've done today in giving direction is vitally, vitally important to communities, not only in my district, but throughout San Mateo County.
That's a good point. Just to make a couple of quick comments, that on hip housing and second units, there's really a limit to what they are able to do, even though they are, you know, probably really cost-effective. But one of the things that we have to deal with is you frankly have to deal with the fact that there's a lot of nimbyism. And I can tell you that in my district, I get ambushed every single time.
Oh, yeah, right.
Every single time, not occasionally. Every single time, there's a project. I don't care if it's one house. But it's, so getting that message out to people that it's really important, it's in their best, it's in their self-interest, is incredibly important. Other comments from the board?
When we began the Housing Task Force, and our own planning and building department relooked at a lot of their ordinances and has relooked at a lot of their zoning mechanisms. And I think we ought to talk to cities about doing that as well, if they possibly can see their way clear. I come from, I used to serve on the San Mateo City Council. And the city of San Mateo has a height and density limit. It was voter-approved. And it was voter-approved by a large amount. But I think that today, if the voters were asked to look at that again, they might have a change of opinion because they are watching their own children and their neighbors' children not be able to live here any longer. And, you know, and I don't, I have not talked to anybody in the city of San Mateo about this. But I just think it's time for every city to kind of do what we did and reevaluate zoning and ordinances, and take a good, hard look at some of the things that we've been living with for 20 and 30 years that maybe we don't have to live with any longer.
One more comment, I guess.
I did ask. You're right. I did, I did.
I was responding to your comment, President Horsley, about the problem with the nimbyism, which we know is incredible barrier. I mean, we probably lose more units per year than we, in terms of reduction or killed projects. So that grassroots advocacy is so critical. And, you know, I think an idea may be worth pursuing. I don't know if it's this budget cycle or the next. You know, should we fund an advocate or two? Because those folks, if you can save, if you can save a project, that's a big accomplishment.
That's kind of exactly what we are doing with Peggy Jensen's group and Home for All, and... Go ahead.
Yes, through the President, Supervisor Pine, part of our Home for All initiative around outreach and education is that we contracted with a consulting group out of Marin who has additional resources from former city managers to work with us on dealing with nimbyism. We're in process of doing research on both what are the political issues around helping elected officials address this question, but also what are the community concerns? We anticipate coming back to the board as part of our budget with potentially some funding opportunities for cities to try to implement some of these new ideas for dealing with nimbyism.
Great, great to hear. So we're going to move on. Do anybody need to take a break? Or can we just keep on going straight through? I have good news, that we don't have to stop to rewind the tape. So should we just go right on through? I do want to thank all of you who came to talk about housing for all, especially you, Tom. I really appreciate that, you know, you all took the time to express your opinion, and we really appreciate it. So thank you. We're going to go next to public safety communication.
Mr. President, members of the board, this is a request from the Communications Division to hire a retiring public safety dispatcher, Patricia Jewett, back for a six-month period to assist with training and other critical issues within our dispatch service, and we recommend approval.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
I'm moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Now, the item number four, it's a Measure K resolution, accepting the four designated elements recommended to the North Fair Oaks Community Council, Middlefield Road Improvement Project. Mr. Callagie?
Yes. Good afternoon, President Horsley, honourable members of the board.
Good afternoon.
Mr. Malp, Mr. Sacco. I will be doing, I'm Mike Callagie, Assistant County Manager, and I'll be doing the presentation on the Middlefield Road redesign project. And by way of history, as many of you recall, in 2011, November 2011, this board approved a North Fair Oaks community plan. And the keystone of that plan was really the redesign of Middlefield Road. And the plan really had some very specific goals. And they were to improve pedestrian bicycle facilities, create a more walkable, bikeable community, provide new facility sidewalks, trees, furniture, preserve local vehicle access, improve travel and transit connections and safety in that area. As many of you will remember also, this project really encompassed the area between Pacific Avenue and Fifth Avenue. And as we did in the past, and actually in 2002, we took care of the utility undergrounding from Fifth Avenue to Atherton. And now this project will also encompass the undergrounding of utilities from Pacific to Fifth. Okay, so the council in October of 2014 recommended to your board, the county developed a design for the project that included three traffic lanes, so a road diet going from four down to three with that center turn lane, parallel parking, bike lanes, and wider sidewalks. To meet that goal, a project steering committee was convened. Really, North Fair Oaks Forward and Public Works and our real property team really did a great job of getting out there and convening the community and forming a great steering committee from a cross-section of the community, including the business district. You can see here some of the workshops that were going on there. We had two community-wide workshops consisting of 80 people. We had five steering committee workshops. And the steering committee was really asked to provide direction on four key areas. The bike lane locations and the type of bike lanes, tree spacing, bulb-out locations, and sidewalk width. The steering committee ran into a little problem along the way and really wanted to have a discussion about displacement. That delayed the project about a year and a half. We brought in experts from around the community. We brought in an expert from Stanford, from Stanford Law School, to really talk about impacts of displacement. He worked in that area. And we brought in urban habitat representative to talk about it. We brought in legal aid. We brought in our own housing department. And we sat down with the steering committee on several occasions to really talk about displacement and what causes it. And, you know, the real consensus was, what we do down here as far as a redesign would pale in comparison to the regional pressures on displacement. So with that in mind, we asked the steering committee to provide clear direction at their fifth and final meeting. And what they came up with consensus on was really the buffered bike lanes of travel along Middlefield Road. So they couldn't really answer the question on the other one. So we went out to the entire community. We hired Gobby Research to conduct a survey throughout North Fair Oaks. 3,971 surveys went out in both English and Spanish. 599 surveys were returned, a 15.1% return, which is very good for that area. What's also interesting about these surveys is that it was split, male and female, almost 50/50. It was split amongst the age groups. And the vast majority of the residents were longtime residents in North Fair Oaks. So what came back on the recommendations from the survey was 67%, the vast majority, approved or wanted tree spacing of 35 feet. And the other options were sporadic trees, or no trees, a small group of trees. And as we know, there's certainly benefits to street trees, aesthetically pleasing, which was the highest response by these individuals, helps remove CO2. And they reduce crime. Actually, kids tend to have better grades where it's trees planted. So all these community benefits, the bulb-outs, the vast majority of them wanted that at every corner as opposed to every, just a key intersection. So 47.7% at every corner. And certainly the benefits of the bulb-outs, improved visibility for pedestrians, the safety, the limited crossing space you would have to cross with bulb-outs. And then the third area was sidewalks, 12- or 13-foot sidewalk, 38.2%. Again, the vast majority wanted the 12-foot sidewalk length. Now, and, you know, obviously, the benefits for sidewalks are wide enough for people to traverse, to gather, to have street furniture and gatherings, ADA accessible. The nice thing about this, in an effort to engage the youth in the community, Rafael Abadondo, the director of programs at the Sienna Youth Center, and Emma Shales, who runs the Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition, ran their own survey with the kids at the Sienna Youth Center. And there, 53 kids responded. They actually mirrored what the community wanted also. It was a great exercise in community engagement. So the survey results, just to summarize here, 67% wanted the 35-foot tree spacing. And we'll also put electricity at those trees so at the holidays, if we wanted to light those trees up, we'd be able to do that, the bulb-outs, and the 12-foot sidewalks. So on March 23, we went to the community council. And the recommendation with those survey results, the council modified the motion. They accepted those... They accepted those buffered bike lanes, 35-foot trees, the bulb-outs and the 12-foot sidewalks. They also asked for installation of green-colored bike lanes. We will look into that. We're very interested in that also. We want to work with the Bicycle Coalition and the kids down there to find out what's the safest, is that, as you approach an intersection or is it throughout the entire project area? They also asked that the county form a task force to consider issues of community preservation, gentrification, displacement, and merchant protection. So the Public Works Department recommends the buffered bike lanes, the 35-foot spacing on each block for the trees, the bulb-outs at all intersections, and the 12-foot sidewalks. And with that, if you have any questions, I'll certainly try to answer them.
Supervisor Sluka?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank Mr. Callagie for all his work and patience during all these community meetings. It's a tribute to your character. Also, I'm serious.
No, yeah, I can imagine.
And then, of course, I want to thank the members of the North Fair Oaks team who worked very hard on this, Jennifer Loggia. I'm going to murder their names, but just you'll know who you are. Maggie Cornejo and Victor Gaetan. Did I get that right, Victor? Yep. For all the things that they did in terms of the community outreach. And also from Public Works, Ann Stillman, Giles Toral, Charter Choi, and Matthew Rubel, for all their technical work. Appreciate everybody's hand in this. And I just like to, I know she's probably not listening, but Rose Jacobs Gibson, former supervisor in the 4th District, I think through her presidency of ABAG was able to really get the money to do the original community plan, which said better, bigger sidewalks, you know, safe crossings for the kids and a lot more. So thank you to former supervisor Rose Jacobs Gibson for her leadership on this issue. And here it is, all these years later, can't, I don't know how many, six maybe. And we're getting ready to vote on this matter. And so it's been a long road coming. But I'm personally very proud of the work that we've done and how we've engaged the community. Thank you.
Any other comments? Well, congratulations on your work. This was a lot of perseverance on your part as well as staff, so congratulations.
Excellent work.
Really good work, yeah.
I'm going to make a motion, if that's okay with everybody.
That's okay.
Make a motion for a resolution authorized, whoops, that was the extra help one. Resolution accepting the following four design element recommendations of the North Fair Oaks Community Council for the Middlefield Road Improvement Project between Pacific and Fifth Avenues. One, buffered bike lanes. Two, 35-foot tree spacing. Three, bulb-outs at all intersections. And finally, 12-foot wide sidewalks.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
What kind of trees, Warren?
I don't know.
Yeah, they're nice, pretty nice, very nice. Maybe redwoods?
No.
Can't do that. So next is the County Managers' Office of Sustainability, Mr. Egomire.
President Horsley, I'll go ahead and just, if I could just introduce this quickly.
Oh, please do.
So I'm very excited to bring to the board's attention the release of our draft Sea Level Rise Vulnerability Assessment, which has been two and a half years in the making. I wish we had scheduled the presentation for housing so all the big audience could have heard it. But...
You should have asked. I would have done.
You know, sometimes you just don't connect the dots. But in any event, this has been a major, major undertaking. As every, as we're well aware, we face these severe risks today with coastal erosion, the event of a 100-year storm, and then we look towards the future with sea level rise. We're the most exposed county. And the thing that's so daunting about it is if we stopped all carbon emissions right now, and there's so much heat in the ocean that this, the melting of these ice sheets is just going to continue. So it's something that, you know, we can't reverse. So what we have with this report is really a foundational document that, you know, will help raise awareness about the issue. It gives data to cities. And it will help us begin planning for, you know, future developments in terms of our land use policies and what gets built where. And then ultimately, as we move into various adaptation strategies, defensive strategies, of which actually there are many going on, on the Bay Shore that Hillary may touch on. So let me take an opportunity to thank a lot of people, if I could. So this, this study has been headquartered in the Office of Sustainability under Hillary's leadership. But in addition, Sally Proit, Jasneet Sharma, Carolyn Rader, Ivana Andrade, T.J. Carter, and Montse Placencia have all shipped in at one time or another. The study is funded in part by the Coastal Conservancy, where the lead is Kelly Melonowski, with the help of Amy Hudson. Don Horsley and his able coastal expert, Deborah Hurst, have contributed, as has Michael Barber from my office, there's Michael. Jim Porter and Erica Powell have contributed. And, you know, of course, with the initiative we've made on investing in fight control, you know, they're going to be more of the implementers. Joe Leclair from planning. On the legal side, we've had Paula Cota and Maggie Tides. Brian Perkins was here. I know he must have come here to hear this, but he probably didn't think he had to wait so long. But Brian Perkins from Congresswoman Spears' office has been a regular participant, as have Sandy Wong and Matt Fabry from CCAG. So we've, you meet every week or every other week. It's been a big, big team effort. But the quarterback who's really drove this whole thing is Hillary Papendick. You know, I can't say enough about the excellent work she's done. We were so lucky to bring her into the county. This, this task has required enormous public outreach, enormous technical skill, managing consultants. It's just really been an enormous task. And I'm not, you know, we never could have done it without Hillary Papendick. So thank you, Hillary.
It's time for the quarterback now.
Great. Thank you Supervisor Pine, President Horsley, and members of the board. Today, I will be talking about the release of our draft Sea Level Rise Vulnerability Assessment, which we released last week on April 5th. This, it'll be available for a one-month public review period until May 5th. And as Supervisor Pine mentioned, this has been a two-year effort, which the county completed with support from the California Coastal Conservancy. I want to recognize everyone who's been a part of this effort. It really has been a team, team project. Before I get into the details of the report, I would like to give some background on the issue and our program. First, as you know, flooding and erosion is already an issue today. And the impacts from storms this winter led the county to declare a state of emergency. This year, we had record rainfall, which led to flooding along the Bayside. And last year, El Nino led to large waves, which led to erosion on the coast side. With sea level rise, we will see an increase in erosion, both temporary and permanent flooding, as well as potential impacts to groundwater. We have already seen eight inches of sea level rise at the San Francisco Bay Tide Gauge since the 1900s. And sea level rise projections keep increasing. We could see up to two feet of sea level rise by 2050. And the latest sea level rise projections say we could see up to eight feet of sea level rise by the end of the century. We have the opportunity to be proactive and prepare for these changes while addressing existing flooding and erosion risks. The county's Sea Level Rise Initiative is called Sea Change SMC. We established the initiative in June of 2015 under the leadership of Supervisor Pine. The goal of the initiative is to increase awareness and understanding of the issue of sea level rise and increase coordination on sea level rise planning across the county. Sea change means a profound or notable transformation. We chose this name because not only are the seas and shorelines changing, but we need a sea change or transformation in the way we do planning. The past is no longer a roadmap for the future, so we need, there's an even greater need for collaborative coordinated approaches. The Sea Change Initiative has three main steps. The first is the assessment phase, or assessing, this is where we are now, includes the vulnerability assessment. Next is the planning phase. This includes the development of resilient strategies and plans and policies to address the issue. The final step is implementation. And this is when we actually build projects on the ground and implement policies and plans. Now I will go into some of the details of the vulnerability assessment. This slide shows what the assessment does and what it doesn't do. First, it's an overview of what is at risk today and the future from flooding and erosion. The project's area includes the entire Bay Shore and the coast side, the north coast. It does not include south of Half Moon Bay. We will be completing the south coast vulnerability assessment once we have modeling data for that area. The study uses best available sea level rise data and existing information about the location of different assets, habitats, and community characteristics. The report does not include a complete catalog of everything in the county. And it also doesn't include fluvial flooding, so flooding from creeks and streams. It also, it's not a prioritization of what's at risk throughout the county. And it also, it does not a plan. That's really our next step, to look at the risk and prioritize and develop solutions. It also, it's a study and it doesn't include any new regulations or requirements. This report is a first step in a multi-phase process. We hope the report will raise awareness about the issue, provide clarity on key impacts, and be a catalyst for future action on the issue. Here's an overview of the different steps that we used to complete the study. We gathered data, developed maps, and then provided, provided a list of all the different types of assets that are exposed by each city in the unincorporated area. We picked 30 assets to do case studies and have a chapter on showing some initial adaptation options. We worked with Arcatus and AUCOM to develop the study. I'd like to bring your attention to our 30 case studies, which we refer to as asset vulnerability profiles. These are a significant portion of the report. There were thousands of assets that were potentially at risk from sea level rise in the county. And we worked with cities and stakeholders and asset owners to choose 30 representative assets to do a more detailed study on. I've shown the spread of the 30 assets on this slide and included the unincorporated assets. These case studies are designed to serve as templates for jurisdictions who want to further evaluate vulnerability. A key tenet of the project has been to facilitate stakeholder and public participation in the project. We've engaged the public, stakeholders, in a number of different ways. We have a technical working group, a policy advisory committee, and a community task force, and have also done a number of different public outreach efforts throughout the development of the report. We've worked really closely with cities, especially in the, in the last few months as we've gotten close to releasing the report. At the same time, we've been working with counties throughout the Bay Area and the state, as well as national groups, to learn from others and be able to incorporate best practices. Now I will walk you through some of the preliminary results from the vulnerability assessment. This map shows the scenarios that we used in the assessment. We chose a storm today, a 1% annual chance storm, and added 3.3 feet to that, which is a mid-range scenario by the end of the century, and then 6.6 feet, which at that point was just above the high end for the, end of the century. And now it's not even the, the high-end scenario for the end of the century. As you can see from these scenarios, the first scenario, the storm today, there's isolated parts of the county that could be affected. When you move to the 3.3-foot scenario, you can see more widespread impacts. And some of the most vulnerable systems of flooding are our transportation systems and our wastewater treatment systems, which are affected in that scenario. And this means that if these systems were to be affected, we could see widespread cascading impacts throughout the county that could affect everyone in the county, not just those living or working on the shoreline. So here's a quick overview of findings in terms of numbers. In the mid-range scenario, the 3.3-foot scenario, we have about 7,000 acres of wetlands that could be inundated. These are natural systems, so we're not sure how they will respond. If there's sediment or ability to move inland, wetlands could actually persist in the future. There's $34 billion in assessed value of parcels located in this mid-level scenario, 360 miles of roads and highways, and then over 100,000 people at risk. Not pictured on the slide is our wastewater treatment plants. In the mid-level scenario, there's five of our nine wastewater treatment plants that are located in that scenario. And at the high-end scenario, seven of the nine wastewater treatment plants are affected. And that doesn't include all the wastewater pump stations and other infrastructure that's associated with those systems. So this is just a quick snapshot of some of the numbers from the report. You can find more detail on the different sectors that we looked at in the executive summary, as well as Chapter 3. So here's our vulnerability assessment timeline. Last month, we met with cities, especially those along the Bay Shore and the coast, to go over the preliminary results of the assessment. This month, the report is out for review. And then over the summer, we will incorporate results that we, any comments, and update the report to, to be a final assessment. At that point, we'll be available to present the findings and next steps to city councils and any others that are interested in presentations. We have a number of upcoming meetings and opportunities to learn more about the assessment. We have two stakeholder meetings and then two public meetings, one in Burlingame and one in Half Moon Bay. And more information of the, about these is available on our website, seachangeSMC.com. So before I close, I wanted to briefly talk a little bit about our Phase 2 resilience planning. Our goals for Phase 2 are to share information, to be a resource for cities and others, and to identify and promote collaborative opportunities. For example, now we have a baseline of information of risks throughout the county about sea level rise. We are interested in providing technical assistance to help support the use of this information. We'd like to develop resources and tools that would be beneficial, beneficial to multiple cities and to continue coordinating across cities, counties, and the region. As a closing slide, I wanted to show that there are already a number of different projects underway throughout the county that are incorporating sea level rise. This is just an overview. There are even more projects than I've shown here. I'm happy to go into more detail on these projects in the question and answer section. So in closing, I provided an overview of the assessment. And I'm happy to meet with you individually to provide more information on the details of the report and any of our next steps that we're considering. And now I'm available for questions.
Questions? Any questions? Just make one quick comment. My, one of my staff personnel, Deborah Hurst, has worked a lot on this with Hillary. Even though, you know, a lot of the projects really is, are on Supervisor Pine's district. And mine is somewhat different in that there's not as much public property that is at risk. But I was, I looked at the Marotta West, our bluffs, the other day. It was a couple of months ago, I was standing on those bluffs, looking at a project that we did to preserve surface beach, the, basically the highway surface beach. The bluffs are almost all gone. And it was just a remarkable amount of erosion. Then the other part of my district, of course, is Pacifica. It turns out that I now realize that Highway 1 is really a levee for large parts of the coast side. Now, our, our risks are different. And they're, you know, there's sea level rise to some extent. A lot of it's really just the, the kink tides and the constant erosion. The other thing is that, you know, we were working on this long-term project about the marsh at Pescadero. We had a big community meeting with RCD, the state, as well as the community. And I was really kind of, you know, the people were talking about taking a lot of the sediment out of the marsh. And one of the cautions was, well, if you do that and you lower the level of that marsh, you could end up with the, a kink tide hitting your town. And I don't think the residents really ever thought about that. So the sea level rise is a serious issue. And, you know, it's going to be something we're going to have to deal with. So I really appreciate the work that you have done, the team has done, and the leadership that Supervisor, Supervisor Pine has brought to this issue. I do have one public speaker, Alan Matlich.
Yes, I'm Alan Matlich, and I'm here representing the San Mateo County Citizens Climate Lobby. Citizens Climate Lobby is a national organization with chapters all around the country. And the primary goal is to try to create a political climate in which we can have a livable future, particularly to try to establish some kind of price on carbon emissions. I'm here really mostly just to congratulate the Office of Sustainability on this, on this report. I spent all weekend poring over it. It is excellent. It's very clear and very, very well researched. There is one point, though, that I do want to point out, and I believe Ms. Papendick had kind of alluded to this. And that is it may be a little bit conservative in its estimates about what sea level will do. On page 21, it writes, "The third national climate assessment project, projects that the average temperature will rise 2 to 4 Fahrenheit across the United States during the next few decades." On March 28th, Michael Mann, eminent climate scientist, testified before the House Science, Space, and Technology Committee. And he estimated that the temperature would, if we continue as business as usual, the temperature would rise 2C, 2 degrees centigrade, in the next 20 years. So it's at the high end of what it's being projected here, and it's more quickly. Now, James Hansen has suggested that if we reach beyond 2C, we will be seeing several meters of sea level rise. So really, what we're looking at in this report, a very, very valuable report, but please take this seriously, it may underestimate the problem. And thank you very much.
Thanks for your comments. So any... So, any, is the motion to accept the report?
Move that we accept the report.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay. We're now going to item number six, it's a Measure K Resolution Authorizing a One-Time Grant of District-Specific Measure K Funds. Supervisor Pine?
Yes. Before you is a proposal to allocate 250,000 from D1 funds to assist the city of Millbrae in installing some portable modular buildings to serve as their rec center while they work to reconstruct a new one after, of course, the, the most unfortunate fire of a year or so ago. And so we have our, the city manager from Millbrae, Marcia Rains is here to join us and may want to say a few words.
Thank you Supervisor Pine, thank you President Horsley and the entire board, and Mr. Malpe. As you know, I am Marcia Rains, the city manager in Millbrae, and I just want to thank Supervisor for putting this item forward. As you're aware, our fire devastated and totally destroyed our community center. Last July, we're already working on what we can do for our first anniversary event, but it did destroy the community center, which housed our rec programs, our senior programs, all of our tiny tots programs, everything. And all those neighbors around us have been very good at helping us find relocation facilities for most of the activities and events. Some of them, however, moved into City Hall, and as those of you who know have been to City Hall, City Hall's a very, very small place, so we're double and tripled up in some cases. We've started working through the community on what we want to do to replace the community center, and the conclusion, of course, early on, was that we do want to replace it. That's gonna take several years, however. So the interim step that has been decided by the committee that we're working with is to do modular units. The insurance will pay for some of that, the city will pay for some of that, and the partnering that I'm proposing, that Supervisor Pine has endorsed and brought forward, would allow a leveraging of funds for the two- to three-year period, more likely three, between now and the time we actually have a facility reopened. We've partnered with our school district at the end of that three-year period, we're hoping that they have use for those interim facilities, modular facilities. So there's a multidirectional partnership here that we're looking for your support. We know you have a lot of demands for the dollars that you have available, but we really appreciate your consideration of this request today, and I can answer questions if you have them.
Thank you Marcia, good to see you.
Good to see you as well.
Is there a motion?
I'll move approval of the allocation.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck with your project. Okay, item number seven is a resolution authorizing a one-time 92, 90,000, 200 grand of district-specific Measure K funds to Life Moves. Supervisor Groom?
Thank you, Mr. President, this is a continuation of some money that we previously gave to Life, to Life Moves, as they update their homeless shelters and facilities, and it's paint and carpeting and plumbing and all those kind of things that you have to do every once in a while. And so I would make a motion that we accept this request and, uh, grant to Life Moves for $90,200.
Second? All favor?
Aye.
Measure passes, okay. Item number eight is another Measure K Resolution Authorizing a One-Time 34,000 Grant of District-Specific Measure K Funds. Supervisor Slocum?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, as you mentioned, it's $34,000 going to Cora for specific work in East Palo Alto, where the number of domestic violence cases this past year increased some 300%. So Cora is going to set up a, basically a program in East Palo Alto to work with the community on that domestic violence matter. So unless there are any questions, I'd make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing a one-time $34,000 grant of district-specific Measure K funds to, to Cora, to provide supervision for community advocates in support of...
Second.
Thank you.
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item number nine is another Measure K Resolution Authorizing a One-Time 75,000 Grant of District-Specific Measure K Funds. Again Supervisor Slocum?
Thank you. There is a group in East Palo Alto, you may have heard of it, called Street Code Academy, they train a lot of kids in coding and a lot of other kinds of computer-type skills. They've changed locations recently, this $75,000 would go to pay their rent and stabilize operations for one year at their new location. So with that, I'd make a motion to approve the $75,000 grant to Street Code Academy.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are now at County Managers' Report, number seven.
Mr. President, members of the board, you have my report, if you have any questions, please ask them.
Any questions? There being none, we'll go on to Board Members' Reports. Supervisor Groom, do you have a report?
No, I do not, Mr. President.
Supervisor Slocum?
Yeah, just quickly here, over the next two Saturdays, the county, we are going to hold, as I mentioned before, a Shaping Our Success Jobs Youth Summit to prepare local teens in underserved communities to enter the workforce and get summer jobs. There'll be about 120 teens this weekend, from 16 to 22, participating from Redwood City, East Palo Alto, Baylehaven, and North Fair Oaks. And this is an awesome program that a number of people have worked on, thanks to everybody, and a thanks especially to Irving Torres, who really, along with Donna Valencourt, actually, and Dr. Fay, who actually put this together.
Supervisor Cana?
Want to adjourn in memory of Amparo Nancy Flores. She was very instrumental in Daly City with the Happy Troopers, it's a group of seniors who are dedicated to cleaning the streets in Daly City. She died at 86 years old. She actually came to this country from, from Mexico, and raised both her kids, single parent, and so she'll be missed by both her sons.
Supervisor Pine, do you have a report?
I, I do have three adjournments in memories. First, adjourn in memory of Frank Benjamin Kitana from Millbrae. He was born in 1920 in Pittsburgh, California, went to high school in Monterey, then joined the Navy. He had a career in the produce business, and he was just extremely active in Millbrae civic, civic life. Extraordinary sad, it's extraordinarily sad that the Baylock family, including former councilwoman Kathy Baylock, lost their son Nicholas. There was truly an amazing service for him over the weekend, and to hear the testimony of the impact he had in his, his life was really moving. And these are always so hard to understand when a young person of such promise passes. And then finally, I'm sure it's on all of our minds, the passing of Terry, Terry Mullen, the wife of former semi-member Gene Mullen and current, mother of current semi-member Kevin Mullen. I do not have her obituary, I think that's coming out later today, but as we all know, the Mullen's are just a foundational family in this county, and Terry Mullen was an important part of that family and of the, our community, and we will miss her very much.
Thank you. I have a couple of adjourned memories. One is Shirley Jane Roush Dry, she was a 59-year resident of Pacifica, passed away this March 7th, 2017. She was born in Lawrence, Kansas, graduated from Liberty Memorial High School, went on to receive a Bachelor of Arts degree in anthropology from San Francisco State University in 1982 at the age of 53, and she graduated summa cum laude. She had a colorful life, began working for the FBI as a clerk in 1948, when J. Edgar Hoover was the director. She moved to Pacifica in 1958 with her husband. She has two children, Carl Dry and Diana Liebrich. She was a retired archaeologist and historian, and all of her fieldwork was in California in both native occupation sites and the mission-era sites. She was employed by the San Mateo County Historical Association as a site manager of both the Sanchez, Adobi, and Woodside store historic sites. These positions entailed conducting environmental and historic education programs for school groups. She also lectured to adult groups on the native peoples of the Bay Area and California's Mexican Rancho era. She, she did a biography of Don Francisco Sanchez, who was the builder of the Sanchez, Adobi, it was actually, was published in San Mateo County's Historical Association Journal. And she was a member of the San Mateo County Historical Association for over 40 years and a charter member of City of Pacifica's Historical Society, and she was an expert at, on Alone Indians. The other is not, an adjourned memory is actually kind of an interesting man, is John T. Knox, he was a longtime Contra Costa Assemblyman, I thought we'd be interested in, he was a liberal Democrat, driving force behind the 1970 creation of the California Environmental Quality Act and the San Francisco Bay Conservation and Development Commission in 1965. He died when he was 92. I know there was a group of women who were really involved and saved the bay, but in terms of the political leadership, Assemblyman Knox was the leader. He, his son said that the creation of the San Francisco Bay Conservation and Development Commission really may have saved the bay from dramatic downsizing, as there were plans to fill in large parts of it, including most of the stretch between Richmond and Berkeley. And some actually wanted to build an airport there, and there was rampant filling of the bay at that time, and it was, he indicated, he told his son, it was really a hard fight to get that bill through. He was also one of the authors of the Knox-Nesbit Act of 1963, which helped establish the Local Agency Formation Commission, and kind of a notable career. And with that, we are now adjourned.